Calling to order the Monday, excuse me, October 7th, 2019, regular meeting of the 37th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Pro Tem Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard.
Here.
Councilmember Dean.
Here.
Councilmember Gavin.
Here.
Councilmember Henan.
Here.
Councilmember Stedman.
Here.
And Mayor Turbrack.
Here.
Our first order of business is approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by the Mayor Pro Tem with support from Councilmember Dean. Are there any changes or additions or corrections? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on our agenda?
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henan.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes. Our agenda has been approved. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge. With us today is Deacon Dan Darga.
So let us pray. Blessed are you, Lord, of all creation, God of justice and God of mercy and God of peace. We give you thanks for the gift of life and for the gift of this community of Berkeley which we serve. We do thank you for the opportunity we have to serve all the people of our city. Help us to listen well, seeking understanding and all that is good. Help us to speak the truth gently, keeping in mind the charity and restraint shown to us by the best of our leaders over the years. Guide us that our decisions and actions may be for the welfare of all, our residents and our visitors alike. Bestow upon us a spirit of service. Gracious Lord, may we continue to build a community where all may live lives rooted in the values of our great country. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have reached the citizens' comments portion of our evening, where you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or Department of the City, please sign your name on the sheet provided at the clerk's table. Again, you may speak on a specific agenda item while it is being considered. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence.
Kurt Hight, Berkeley. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I was informed the other day that they were doing counts on Coolidge and on the side streets, and I am assuming that it is for the six-month evaluation of the Coolidge Road Diet. But regardless of why they were counting, it is prompting me to appear before council with some sense of urgency. We were told that prior to the start of the Coolidge Highway Road Diet Evaluation, the following would occur. The benchmark metrics and indices would be clearly defined, definition of what was being measured and baseline comparisons, means by which the metrics would be statistically analyzed, and a comprehensive statistical traffic sampling study would be conducted on residential side streets to determine the potential impact to lane reductions. Also, a process would be implemented to collect feedback from residents on any of the issues or concerns. Now, I spoke at the council meeting in April about my concerns that these promises have not been fulfilled. At that time, almost three months had passed without any attempt to have an open discussion with those concerned about how or why or what they would monitor. The 24-hour data sheet that was released and was allegedly going to be the basis for the benchmarks used was not clear, but if you just look at the sheet as well as the counts, it was based on there are numerous things that just do not add up. Who was supposed to be driving this? Who arranged for this count to take place? Why wasn't any consideration given to the proper direction for areas to count that would actually tell us what we need to know? Why hasn't there been any further public discussion about if that data could or would be used accurately? The issues sadly are too many to discuss in this type of forum here, so I'm asking you to direct someone, whomever that may be, to set a date for at least one meeting to occur where interested parties can have a discussion in relation to the road diet and promises that were made on how it would be monitored versus what has been done so far and what has been presented has fallen short or failed at living up to those promises. I would ask that you, Mr. Mayor, and hopefully one sitting neutral council member would be there along with the city manager and whomever else would be representing the DDA. I want to be able to say publicly that this council and the city administration followed through on delivering the promises eight months ago, so I'm asking more definitively can we make this happen? Thanks again for your time tonight.
Thank you, Kurt. Nobody else for citizens' comments, huh? Everybody's waiting for something on the agenda, or what it could be. Okay. Well, with that, we will bring citizens' comments to a close, and we will move on to our order of business for the evening. First up is our consent agenda. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Approval of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the 37th City Council Meeting on Monday, September 16th, 2019, and motion number M-8119, matter of casting Berkeley's official vote for the Board of Directors for the MML Liability and Property Pool, directing the city clerk to send in the marked ballot.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Gavin with support from Councilmember Stedman. Are there any corrections or additions?
One minor correction in Ms. Stedman's comments at Communications. It stated the Communication Advisory Committee had not been having difficulty recruiting block ambassadors for the city, and it actually should be that they have been having difficulty.
Good catch.
Okay. Thank you. Any additional, any other changes in the minutes? Okay. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on tonight's consent agenda?
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henan.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes. Our consent agenda has passed. We now move on to our regular agenda. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda?
Recognitions Presentations, matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Seeing none of those, we will move on to item number two, please.
Oath of Office, oath of office to the newly appointed city clerk, Victoria Mitchell.
Since you cannot administer the oath to yourself, I will help. All right. Ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. "I, Victoria E. Mitchell."
"I, Victoria E. Mitchell."
"Having been duly appointed as city clerk for the City of Berkeley."
"Having been duly appointed as city clerk for the City of Berkeley."
"Do hereby solemnly swear."
"Do hereby solemnly swear."
"That I will support the Constitution of the United States."
"That I will support the Constitution of the United States."
"The Constitution of the State of Michigan."
"The Constitution of the State of Michigan."
"The Charter of the City of Berkeley."
"The Charter of the City of Berkeley."
"And I will perform the duties of my office to the best of my ability."
"And then I will perform the duties of my office to the best of my ability."
All right, there you go. Congratulations. I would do that for him.
Okay.
Okay, welcome officially.
Thank you so much. I'm very appreciative of the opportunity.
As I say, anything you'd like to address?
I'd like to thank the city manager and the mayor and council for this opportunity. I'd also like to thank Deputy City Clerk Gina Harold. She's been a wealth of information and assistance in the past two weeks that I've been with the city. I'm a longtime member and volunteer with the Berkeley School District Community, so I look forward to expanding my role serving the residents of Berkeley in this capacity. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you, and we are certainly happy to have you here. All right, honeymoon's over. Item number three, please.
Motion number M-8119, matter of authorizing the Knights of Columbus 2299 West 12 Mile Road, Berkeley, Michigan, to conduct a Tootsie Roll Drive in the City of Berkeley from Friday, October 11th through Sunday, October 13th, from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Is there a motion to approve M-8119?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Baker with support from Councilmember Dean. Mr. Baumgart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a continuation from our conversation from the previous meeting, there are some items that council took upon themselves by updating their rules and rules of procedure. There was some talk about that being extended to other people that are associated with the city and making sure, making clear what that association would be. So the proposed ordinance, updates our ethics ordinance that we already have in the book, section 2-40, and it also, as the motion item clarifies, that it puts items that were already in our ordinance into a standards of conduct. It establishes an ethics board to be appointed by this body, and it also sets some standards in line with those standards that council recently put upon themselves by clarifying what city officials are, as well as making sure that it includes city employees as well.
This is a first reading, as was mentioned. Who would like to kick things off here?
I'd be glad to.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Your Honor. As the city manager mentioned, this is a continuation from several discussions that we've had from the spring through our last meeting, where we've sought to better understand and clarify and communicate the way in which we, as city officials and those who do choose to serve the city, are expected to and have every opportunity to behave. There was some information at our last meeting that we talked about that I thought might be helpful as a way to kind of get us into the groove here with this thing, and it actually comes from the preamble that we reviewed at our last session. It helps remind me and inspire me of why I'm here and why I'm sure all of you have similarly made this pledge. It reads, "Code of Ethics for Government Service calls upon public servants to treat their office as a public trust. It often takes extraordinary moral courage to do what is right. The strength and value of a code of ethics are found in their capacity to inspire voluntary commitment to higher moral standards than law or custom. By doing so, public servants inspire and justify the confidence and faith in government." And so I think by moving forward with this ordinance component, we will be doing just that, providing the clarity and confidence that we really do mean it. We are one of the few communities in the area to not have a formal mechanism in place with an ethics review board to help hold ourselves accountable, and so one of the things that this does is helps establish that, the parameters for how that will be built, so that we can entrust it to help ensure that we're doing everything that we wanted to do in that preamble. We did get a few comments from folks, and I had a few tweaks here, but before we get into, you know, a couple of wordsmithy things, just wanted to pause and see if others around the table here had additional thoughts or comments that you'd like to share at the big picture level on this. So thank you, Your Honor.
Councilmember Blanchard.
Thank you, Your Honor. In looking at this, I went back out to the MML, and I found out that the MML puts out a very guide, 70 pages of how to do this, so it's not something that we thought up by ourselves, and in the back of that, looking for ethics ordinances, the appendix C, they list 18 different cities who have worked with them to put together ethics ordinances, so it's not something else, you know, that we just threw together. And also appendix E is the list of professional associations' code of ethics. So these are all documents that can be used as reference and shows what organizations have codes of ethics. American Association of School Administrators, American Institute of Certified Planners, it goes on and on. So this is something I think that it's time that we update. We need it very badly, and I think we should move forward with it.
Okay. There's no comments? Mr. Sarin.
Just, if I may, just a few observations I want to make. I did review this last week, although not as deeply as I would have liked. I think it's a good start, conceptually. There is some fine tuning, I believe, that's necessary, just a few notes I've made there. I mean, there are some housekeeping, some wordsmithing, and some internal consistency and inconsistency things, some of the verbiage, some of the references are a little inconsistent that I think we need to clean up. On a more substantive note, a number of communities do have ethics ordinances. It's pretty common for those ordinances to deal with standards and topics involving corruption, you know, self-dealing, conflicts of interest, using public office for personal gain. It's a little less common to go the next step, as we're talking about doing here, which is attempting to, I guess, set, well, really more than guidelines if it's in an ordinance, but parameters for behavior and decorum. We all know the need to, in order to have efficient and effective meetings, to be able to have civil discourse. The difficulty sometimes in attempting to do this is the distinction can be very murky, and reasonable people can differ as to what is candid, direct, passionate expression, discussion, or even disagreement, and what is uncivil, disrespectful, or even offensive. Sometimes it's crystal clear. A lot of times, it's not so clear, and we see that throughout our society, from Washington, DC, all, you know, and everywhere else throughout the 50 states. So I'm just saying, it's a valiant effort we're doing here, but I think we just need to be really careful in what we do, that we are trying to promote civility while not at the same time suppressing, you know, free exchange of ideas, which we should never be suppressing. If anything, we want to be encouraging that. I'm a little concerned, I think this is probably the area that needs the most work, which is the whole structure of the Board of Ethics. Great idea to have a Board of Ethics, but I think we really need to consider and better set forth exactly what are the limits or the breadth of the Board of Ethics authority? What resources are they going to have available to them? Exactly how and by what means are they going to conduct their investigations? How are those investigations going to be triggered? Is there any kind of, I guess, filtering mechanism where there'd be some initial determinations as to what may be warranted versus what is clearly unwarranted? One of the difficulties is, once we create a Board of Ethics, we've created a public body. That means everything they do is going to be subject to the Open Meetings Act, so we just need to be real careful before we bring complaints forward and potentially put people through a lot publicly that we've really thought it through and we've put appropriate parameters and protections, because the rights go both ways, for the accused and for the accuser. And last thing I have noted, and again, this is just based on my rather superficial review, is I do have some concerns about the last section, which talks about the potential removal of council members and discipline of employees. I don't think we can by ordinance create the ability to remove a council member. I mean, an elected council member can only be removed in accordance with state law and what our city charter says. We can't by ordinance, and that's typically, there's some corruption where you're removed by the governor, or you're recalled by the voters. So just something that caught my eye that we need to look at, and by the same token, when it comes to employees, we have to make sure that the ordinance isn't structured in such a way so that the ethics ordinance and the Board of Ethics can't and isn't intend to override or circumvent our merit system or our union contracts which govern employee discipline. We can't, through this ordinance, change the rules in a union contract or in our merit system. So these are all things that are fixable. I'm just saying, I think we gotta, we gotta put this in the oven and bake it a little bit more and refine it to address, I think, those main themes, and then, like I said, there's a lot of little housekeeping, wordsmithing kind of things that we can clean up.
Okay. Should we table this for further review by the city attorney? It seems that he hasn't had enough time to look at this. Well, I certainly think, based on his comments, that at the very least, there are going to be significant changes. I think at this point, before we move on to try to have some additional dialogue, at least so that we can get more of an idea of what needs to potentially be looked at or doesn't need to be looked at before moving forward with another reading of this in the future. I apologize. I don't know what's going on. It's been a rough day. It's coming out here in my voice. Other comments, feedback for the attorney? Councilmember Henan.
Yeah, I'm really astounded that this was even proposed. I mean, this is just clearly unconstitutional. It is the classic definition of a chilling effect on freedom of speech, where people are going to be afraid to speak for fear of what actions might be taken against them. Using language from the ordinance, it's meant to be preventative, not punitive. Prevent speech instead of punishing improper speech after it happens, prior restraint. And there are going to be people that, no matter how respectful you are, if you disagree with them, they're going to take it as a personal attack, they're going to look at some other way to try and silence you. They'll call your words demeaning, harassing, accusatory, disrespectful, all words used in this ordinance. And could, using words from this ordinance, a reasonable person consider my comments here as not in a constructive tone? So who decides who's reasonable? Everybody thinks they're reasonable. Everybody thinks they're being constructive. So how's this even possibly enforceable? Or are these very words I'm speaking right now unethical? This is just a, any attempt to control what people are saying and how they say it is trampling all over the First Amendment. And sadly, 220 years since the Unconstitutional Sedition Act, which this really closely parallels. It just seems we haven't learned our lesson. If you don't like the way things are being said on social media or other places, the solution is not to stop free speech, but it's to go there and participate and show by example. What I would like us to look at is accepting of food and drinks from the vendors that we award contracts to, and accepting scholarships to conferences from the DDA when we hold an oversight role over them. You know, that's akin to me accepting a vacation from my employee right before their performance review. You know, I can't speak for the rest of you, and I'm not accusing anything wrong that if the gifts you've received have influenced you, but I know for me, since I have refused all of those gifts, it's impossible for me to have been influenced by them. So if there's any, if anything comes before me that's trying to limit how people speak, you know, outside of ourselves, I will be voting against it as unconstitutional, but I would like us to tighten this and stop taking gifts from vendors and the people we oversee.
Okay, thank you. Additional questions or comments, at least from council, before we open it up? Mayor Pro Tem? After, oh, Councilmember Dean, go ahead.
I guess I'm listening to you, Councilmember Henan, and I hear what you're saying, and I think, though, when I read this, the sense that I had was to engage in discussion with a level of decorum and to not name-call. I mean, I think everybody has the right to express themselves verbally, written, however, but there have just been incidences where it, in my mind, things have crossed the line periodically. And so as elected officials, as city employees, as department heads, I think it's up to us to set an example, whether it's legislated by an ethics ordinance or not, and I think that this, and ethics ordinance, not specifically this ethics ordinance, but I think that having an ethics ordinance at least outlines, it sets a bar and outlines acceptable behavior. So I don't, I guess I'm choosing to not look at it as limiting, but is to think before we speak, think about the message that we want to send, and to have respect for whomever we're engaging in conversation with. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate all the input that's being discussed here, as we all are, and many of the items that I was going to suggest that we tweak in the document. So, who decides who's reasonable? Everybody thinks they're reasonable. Everybody thinks they're being constructive. So, how's this even possibly enforceable? Or are these very words I'm speaking right now unethical? This is just a, any attempt to control what people are saying and how they say it is trampling all over the First Amendment. And sadly, 220 years since the Unconstitutional Sedition Act, which this really closely parallels. It just seems we haven't learned our lesson. If you don't like the way things are being said on social media or other places, the solution is not to stop free speech, but it's to go there and participate and show by example. What I would like us to look at is accepting of food and drinks from the vendors that we award contracts to, and accepting scholarships to conferences from the DDA when we hold an oversight role over them. You know, that's akin to me accepting a vacation from my employee right before their performance review. You know, I can't speak for the rest of you, and I'm not accusing anything wrong, that if the gifts you've received have influenced you, but I know for me, since I have refused all of those gifts, it's impossible for me to have been influenced by them. So, if there's any, if anything comes before me that's trying to limit how people speak, you know, outside of ourselves, I will be voting against it as unconstitutional, but I would like us to tighten this and stop taking gifts from vendors and the people we oversee.
Okay, thank you. Additional questions or comments, at least, from council before we open it up? Mayor Protem?
After, oh, Councilmember Dean, go ahead. I guess I'm listening to you, Councilmember Henin, and I hear what you're saying. And I think, though, when I read this, the sense that I had was to engage in discussion with a level of decorum and to not name-call. I mean, I think everybody has the right to express themselves verbally, written, however, but there have just been incidences where it, in my mind, things have crossed the line periodically. And so, as elected officials, as city employees, as department heads, I think it's up to us to set an example, whether it's legislated by an ethics ordinance or not. And I think that this, and ethics ordinance, not specifically this ethics ordinance, but I think that having an ethics ordinance at least outlines, it sets a bar and outlines acceptable behavior. So, I don't, I guess I'm choosing to not look at it as limiting, but is to think before we speak, think about the message that we want to send, and to have respect for whomever we're engaging in conversation with. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Honored. I appreciate all the input that's being discussed here, as we all are, and many of the items that I was going to suggest that we tweak in the document you had highlighted pertaining to the removal of office. I think all this does say is, if it's necessary to do so, the city would follow the requirements as, in accordance with the laws of the state. So, basically, it would do it just as you described, but simply just indicate what path that unfortunate journey would need to take if we were to do so. But in general, I think this is a good initial start. There's a few, like little consistency terms as well, the notion of the board and how the board, how a matter is sent to the board, how does it get to them, what do they do with it, that kind of stuff. I think we can refine a little more and certainly learn from the MML resources and our neighboring communities that have these in effect. So, I think having this initial conversation now, whether it turns into a second reading or if it comes back for another first reading, based on the nature of the tweaks, I think we're doing some important work here.
Thank you. Question or comments? I thought I saw some folks raise their hands or motion if they're coming up.
Hi. Rachel Pisantini on Oxford and Berkeley. A couple of things. Councilmember Henin, just so you know, some of the things that you read is actually currently in the current Code of Ethics. I went through that Code of Ethics that you guys are proposing line by line and compared it to the current ethics code that you have. So, first I want to say, you know, I've been an HR manager for over 20 years, and I commend you for wanting to have an ethics policy, first and foremost. But I want to point out some concerns of the newly proposed ethics policy that I hope you seriously consider addressing before you vote anything as policy here. The two, there's only a couple of minor changes. Actually, what, whoever wrote this, they basically took what you had and changed the format and took out a couple of words and then added the, the, what do you call it? The committee, the Ethics Committee. One of the things, maintaining nonpartisan in all official acts was removed. It was located, it's located in Section B of the current ethics policy, but when this section was rewritten, the requirement to maintain nonpartisan in all official acts was removed from Section D on page three. Why is it missing? Maybe it was a total mis-mistake or an oversight on the person who revised the ethics policy. I highly recommend that you consider putting that back in, because our local government is and should be nonpartisan. Having a city council in place to look out for and care for all residents of Berkeley, not just residents that belong to a strongly-served Democratic club. Having a city council or any other board in Berkeley is also not about constantly bringing the like-minded people or only allowing members of the Berkeley Democratic Club on these boards. If you don't put the clause back in, it will certainly look like the city has a bias against people who are not in that special club. On the surface, the concept of creating an ethics review board of three people sounds great. The problem is, this board will have a conflict regardless of who you appoint to it. The appointees to this ethics board will be asked to judge the ethics and behavior of the same people who appoint them to this board. This is absolutely a conflict of interest regardless of who the appointee is. I have no idea what the purpose is for all of a sudden wanting to add an ethics board. Not that the concept is bad, but it strikes me a little strange. I mean, do we have numerous ethics complaints? Is this being done because election season is almost upon us and things tend to get a little spirited around here? Out of the few ethics complaints that the city has received over the past three years, have you really honestly felt that someone violated the ethics policy? Because if you did, it surely must have been hidden from the public, as no one from the city admitted to it, nor did it follow the current ethics policy and come before city council with an advisory recommendation from the city manager. If you really want to do this right, which would involve providing an unbiased and conflict-free ethics service to the residents and to the employees of this great city, then you need to put in place an ethics hotline ran by a third party, just like public companies are required to do under the Sarbanes-Oxley Act. Anything less would be a conflict of interest and a waste of time. Municipalities often do have third-party ethics hotlines. If this cost for this type of service is too high for our little city, then partner up with neighboring cities. Go into an agreement for a shared service for a third-party ethics hotline. Third-party ethics hotlines will and can help you be a better city council and a better employer to your employees that work for the city. Having an independent hotline available to employees and residents can help alert the city and reduce the possibility of inappropriate and illegal actions. Ethics hotlines provide a confidential way for residents and employees to present issues to the city and lessen the concerns the city will have. I'm not here to lecture you on the work environment within City Hall, but I am here to tell you that I have heard repeatedly, and I mean repeatedly, from current city workers, previous city workers, and residents that visit City Hall, that the work environment within the city is not very desirable. So, maybe a third-party ethics hotline is needed just for your employees. Or, maybe the city should consider hiring an HR professional who is trained and experienced in dealing with these things, as well as someone who has experience for a solution for a low morale work environment. If the city is insistent on continuing with the internal ethics board appointed by city council, then I highly recommend that the city partner with a neighboring city to also do the same thing. And then put, our ethics board selected by our city council will only hear the ethics complaints from the neighboring city. And the neighboring city's ethics board will hear Berkeley's ethics complaints. In all fairness, I think the residents have a right to know and will be very interested in the following. In fact, I would like to know, who authored this proposed ethics policy? Why did the proposed ethics policy come about? What is the problem you are trying to solve?
Well, Mr. Baumgartner?
Ms. Marrow is the primary author on this. After researching ordinances across our, from some of our various neighbors, Birmingham and Royal Oak are two that I look to specifically, the board came about. As I reviewed some of these ordinances, I did notice that a board was in place in a couple of these other communities. I thought it was a desirable alternative to the city manager, being the primary, basically, researching body required to put forth an advisory opinion. As it was pointed out earlier, I am appointed by this body if an ethics ordinance comes across, on somebody who is essentially my boss, it would not, the optics of me either saying something is absolutely a clear violation or not being a clear violation, both come with issues. And so, putting that to an impartial third body, the ethics board, as proposed in the ordinance, did allow for those opinions to have a, I think, a higher threshold of integrity in the public's mind. And so, I was trying to eliminate the idea that sort of an employee is investigating their, somebody who is a body that's essentially their bosses. So, that was the reason I had included the board as a portion of the proposed ordinance. And the nonpartisanship portion I will look into, but as I said, it was clearly pointed out and correctly pointed out, that to act in a partisan manner would be actually a violation of the city's charter, not just a mere ordinance, but it was not intentionally taken out at any point in the authorship of this ordinance.
Thank you for answering my question. I'm going to leave my speaking notes with the clerk to be entered as a matter of public record.
Thank you, Rachel.
I am Steve Allen. I live on Columbia here in Berkeley. I'm here tonight because I love our city, and I agree that ethics are a very strong part of being an elected or appointed official or an employee of a city. Most of you who have ever had any dealings with me know that I try to keep a level head, be smooth about things. You get nothing when you attack people. I'm also here tonight because I feel like we're witnessing the creation of a worrisome ordinance that serves very little useful purpose, other than to further drive a wedge between citizens. I fear that the meaning of "ethics" in quotation marks has morphed itself into a new buzzword much like bullying, also in quotation marks, has. Sadly, they are often used as a weapon when a disagreement occurs. Because of this and other factors, I have some grave concerns regarding the proposed ethic ordinance, and I want to share them with you. This appears very harmless on its face. You look it over, it's like, yeah, pretty much standard boilerplate, but it also can easily be seen as an effort to silence those with opposing views. This is an attempt to limit free thinking and free speech, and this is the kind of thing that the ACLU takes an active interest in. Government should not ever so much as attempt to legislate the thoughts and feelings of its citizens. Long-term, I believe this action will limit the amount of folks willing to serve for free on our numerous boards and commissions. Several folks have already commented about this to me. I urge you not to pass this ordinance, as it has the very real propensity to widen an already large gap. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Charles Terrell from Berkeley. Mr. Stern, I would agree with you. This is a document that needs significant work. I would be embarrassed to have submitted something that needs this kind of significant work for review tonight. It does not need tweaking. It needs major work done to it. A lot of things in here are not defined terms. It's not defined how a reasonable person's standard would be established. It's not defined what is a constructive tone, what is not a constructive tone. Going to the board, what are other desirable qualities that you look for in a board? That's not, any of that is not in here. This says, and it's even, it's actually even in the existing code, in the existing ethics ordinance, that all officials will be independent. Independent from who? Independent from what? Independent from political parties? We don't know. It doesn't say. There are no definitions there. The functions of the board. How will the board function? How will things be brought to their attention? That's not there. How will those things be tracked? There are timelines. How will those timelines be tracked? How will those timelines be reported? None of that is in there. This does not deserve the light of day. Mr. Blanchard, I'll ask you directly. You said it. You said, "We need it very badly." What's that based upon? I don't see huge numbers of ethics complaints. We haven't seen those rolling out. We don't see people standing in line needing it very badly. Is there sometimes a tone and tenor to some of the social media posts? That could be better? Absolutely. But you know what? It's up to the individuals how they want to express themselves. It's not up to the city, the council, or anybody else to decide how somebody wants to express themselves. If they express themselves poorly, skip on to the next one. But I don't see as needing it very badly. There is an existing code. Let's not talk like there isn't one. There is an existing ethics code. That could be tweaked up a little bit. I share the concerns of prior speakers with the board and the things that the board can get us into. There are some things that have not been addressed in the ethics ordinance in this new one at all. There is no mention anywhere in the current or the new about, say, a city official shows up to an official function under the influence? Is that an ethical violation? I would think it should be. What about, should someone, a city official, seek elected office? Should they be removed from their position immediately? Should they be asked to resign? Should they have to resign immediately? Should they be, should they file for other, for an elected office, not even an other elected office? If it's a position you currently have and you're running for reelection, absolutely that's there. But if somebody were to run for a county position, state position, or even if an employee or somebody from a board or a commission, a volunteer, were to run for council, should they need to leave those other positions? And that, to me, should also be part of an ethics ordinance. So, I could see taking a couple of little tweaks at the existing. I don't see the need for this. This document should not have, as it is, as it is written, does not deserve your consideration for a first reading. Mr. Blanchard, if you could address your "we need it very badly," please.
Our current ethics ordinance is out of date, and what I'm meaning is, we need to update the current ordinance so that it's effective. There are some problems. We, Councilmember Vick, I both mentioned, we have a list of things that need to be done in this, but we need to get something done so we have an effective ethics ordinance.
Okay. That's different than "we need it very badly." To make changes to the existing ethics ordinance, I am in support of that. This is not the way to do it with, I mean, I didn't find out about it until Saturday. I didn't see the package posting until Saturday, and even then, it was hard to find. It's not part of the calendar. The agenda is not on the calendar. It was not easy to find this meeting's agenda and the full package behind it and all the information behind it. It was a last-minute surprise. It deserves better than that. I would even suggest, as Mr. Height suggested with the road diet and looking at things for that, there should be some public meetings about this. What do people see as issues in terms of ethics? Mr. Henin brought up some things about taking things from vendors, about scholarships and things from other boards. That's, that's a new one there, too. So, those deserve, I think, a good public discussion and to have maybe a couple of special meetings to talk about ethics and how the community wants to see ethics addressed in the future.
John Kagaishel, Berkeley. I want to applaud the council for looking at this. I think it's very important, and I wanted to be a voice saying that it's important from this crowd, instead of saying that it's unnecessary or going on espousals of free There is a problem with the way our ethics code is currently functioning, in the sense that I don't think it really functions at all. There doesn't seem to be an appropriate mechanism that gives peace of mind to residents, that when they feel wronged, it's not about whether or not they are actually wronged. It's a matter of whether or not they were heard, they were given their day, so to speak, and a decision was made that was fair and just and equal for all. We talk about, I hear people saying here about ethics, and there was, is there not ethics complaints? There's been plenty of ethics complaints for such a small town. I've only lived here for a couple of years, and I'm personally aware of many of them. And they've largely, basically, gone unanswered, and that's frustrating. It's frustrating because it doesn't seem that there is an appropriate mechanism for how these get addressed. So, when I hear things like, there should be an ethics board, there should be somebody whose job is to really just look at these and make some determinations, that sounds fantastic to me. When I hear people who say that, oh, it's going to stifle free When I hear people who say that, "Oh, it's going to stifle free speech," I have been personally a victim of public, of people who have tried to do this chilling effect on me. And I think for a lot of people, that effort is enough to quiet them down and shut them up and prevent them from coming here and fighting for this ordinance. So I urge the council, work with the city attorney, figure out the right language, figure out the right process, but by no means are we okay in our status quo. Thank you.
I'm Nancy Stimmick. I live on Princeton in Berkeley. I agree, we should all treat each other with respect. But if anybody on the city or a member of a council or board cannot say, "I disagree with you. I disagree with your actions," perhaps, then there is definitely something wrong. This is going to happen. Things get spirited. We don't want puppets on the council and on the boards. We want people who are after our best interests. If you speak your concern, you should be free to go about your business. And it seems like if there's inappropriate behavior, you shouldn't all just say, "Okay, fine," to save face. You know, "We're a board. We have to be, act like we're always a happy couple." It's not going to happen, and things are going to be said. And I don't think every time something's said, someone should be called to the carpet for it. I've seen things in this room, and I've seen things in the planning commission room that disrespect the residents. You know what? You're all volunteers. You all do other jobs. Sometimes you've had a hard day, and things are going to happen. And I think in some sense, we need to accept this. It was said that sometimes disagreement is viewed as negative. Not necessarily. I mean, there is just disagreement in this world. Things aren't always positive and pretty, and we all need to accept that. Thank you.
I will make just a few comments before, I think we go back to what Councilmember Blanchard mentioned earlier. Ethics, ethics ordinance, ethics code. I have a hard time with, I have a hard time talking without coughing. A hard time with disagreeing with anything that's ethics, that's about ethics and ethical, and trying to bring about certain, a certain level, I guess, of how we should treat each other. I didn't write this ordinance, but the goal, at least in my reading, and again, this is something we're certainly going to need to do some additional work on, is not to ever stifle disagreement. I think I've made it abundantly clear in all of my communications and any other time I talk and any newsletter I write, that when it comes to social media, it's absolutely, to me, in a very strong word, embarrassing the way that we treat each other. And I can't legislate what people say or do on social media, and I don't want to. You can say whatever you want. Freedom of speech. I've also said on numerous occasions that disagreement is great for our community. Other points of view, learning from each other, that's important. I have no issues at all with disagreement. You can disagree without calling somebody an idiot. You can disagree without calling somebody some name because of who they're associated with or their group. Saying that this is going to drive a wedge further in our community, it's already there. It's already there. And it's unfortunate, but it is, and it's not changing, whether this ordinance is here or not. Pretty clear battle lines have been drawn. I don't know why, but it's the way it happens. It's pretty easy to see. I do have concerns with an ethics board. I have a problem, a concern there, because, like was mentioned earlier, if council appoints those people, it's going to be very difficult for those folks to ever have to make a decision, should they ever have to, regarding council. Initially, that's a conflict right off the bat. I get that. So if that does end up coming to fruition, I would rather see that board created in a way that is not just council appointments, not just the seven of us appointing three people and a bunch of alternates to this board. I don't know that that, on its own, actually creates what we want it to create without a conflict already inherent in it. I do want to see us have standards of how we interact, not just in terms of what we say and social media, but all the other things that were mentioned and what we should do as leaders in this community, how we should act from, as was mentioned, potentially corruption and conflict of interest, financial gains, to, yes, to how we treat each other. It's not that way in Washington. It's pretty obvious. And I don't think a lot of people in this country are real crazy about the rhetoric that comes out of Washington or go on Twitter. It's pretty easy to see at all levels, and it keeps flowing down from that. And it's here. It's gotten down to the city of Berkeley. And it's unfortunate, and it's very depressing to me, but at the end of the day, people get behind keyboards, they say what they want to say, and that's their right to say what they want to say. But if they're an elected official, I hope they disagree with those people without taking it to a level where it doesn't need to go. That is my biggest concern as it relates to any code of ethics. Whether it's online, whether somebody's standing up in front of me, someone's at that microphone, and I don't like what they're saying, I'm not going to call them a name. I'm not going to send them a message. It's fine. It's their opinion. Whether I agree or disagree, it doesn't matter. They're allowed to have an opinion. They're allowed to express that opinion freely. But when it goes further than that, you start attacking, which happens far too often, that's where I have an issue. And I don't know that this or any ordinance is actually going to fix that. I don't know that it's possible to fix that, as we've said. It's not going to happen. So with that, I'm going to move on. I'm not going to, we need to, we've got some other things that we've got to accomplish. It's clear that this needs a little bit of work, based on some, depending on who you are, a lot of work. But, Mr. Attorney, you have some, you've gotten some notes from a number of people here, both from the public.
Certainly.
Councilmembers. We need to do some work on this. I am not saying this thing is, should just go away. I think we need to continue working on this. There's certainly merit, as far as I'm concerned, but we need to do some additional work first. Okay?
Understood.
There is a motion on the table right now, but, Councilmember Blanchard, you asked to postpone table?
I think we should postpone this. Give the attorney and the city manager time to take a look at it and see if they can reformat it and come up with something that's more relevant.
Mr. Attorney, do we need a separate motion, or can the maker and the supporter of the motion agree to amend to a postponement of the motion on the table?
Well, you can do it either way, but I think if it's by a claim, that this should be consensus, that this should be postponed, that will suffice.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. I certainly would support postponing. I think we've gotten some terrific input tonight from folks. Clearly, some editing issues were made. I appreciate the points of some stuff that was removed, which I do not support removing that. And a lot of the input about how this can be structured. I think we can continue to learn from our neighbors that have these in place, how they went about appointing their members, looking at Michigan, another tremendous resource we have at our disposal. So I certainly support postponing so we can do the right thing with this.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilmember Dean is the supporter. Are you good on, you agree with that?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Ms. Mitchell, would you call for a, we have a motion now to postpone. Would you please call the roll?
Henon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Now move on to item number five on tonight's agenda.
Ordinance number O-1219, first reading of a zoning ordinance of the city council of the city of Berkeley, Michigan, to amend section 138-551 of chapter 138 zoning to change zoning ordinance violations of the chapter from misdemeanors to municipal civil infractions.
Is there a motion to approve O-1219?
Motion to approve.
Support. Motion approved by Councilmember Stedman with support from, I believe, Councilmember Gavin. Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the first of two related items, both with the same effect, just in different sections of the city's code of ordinances. The first one deals specifically with violations to the city's zoning code. Currently, they are misdemeanors, as we've discussed in the past several times over the last couple of months. A misdemeanor is a criminal charge, and so there's a specific threshold that the city must meet in order to even appear before a judge to try to get the ball moving on enforcement, which has become cumbersome in the past and has delayed things, whereas a municipal civil infraction would not pose the same issue. Also, in this particular situation, you are giving somebody essentially a criminal record for violating the city's zoning ordinance. So the conversation from city council and from administration has been that that is overly burdensome and want to try to move to a more appropriate municipal civil infraction. This item, specifically the zoning code, has been through planning commission review and public hearing, and they did recommend it positively to the city council.
Mr. Attorney, is there anything additional?
I think the city manager covered it pretty well. Council has been advised and has had discussions at prior meetings about misdemeanors versus municipal civil infractions and the relative merits of going one way or the other. This ordinance, as the city manager said, is tied to or actually related to the one after that. We have to do a separate, this one is a separate ordinance, because this pertains simply to the zoning. And all this ordinance, this first ordinance before you would do would transform violations of the zoning ordinance into municipal civil infractions, where they're currently misdemeanors. We had to do it as a separate ordinance, because as a zoning ordinance, there's a little more to the process. It had to undergo planning commission review, public hearing and recommendation, which has happened. And so it's now coming before you for action, and then the ordinance that follows that we'll talk about in a moment deals with other code provisions.
I think what Mr. Sterren said and Mr. Baumgarten, that's pretty specific for what we're looking at here. There are only about eight lines on this current ordinance that we're looking at, and there is a change. Violations of this chapter are municipal civil infractions as opposed to misdemeanors in the zoning ordinance. Any additional discussion? Councilmember Henon?
Yeah, I held a conversation with Mr. Sterren and also our prosecutor. You know, my questions were around, will we still have the same ability to enforce our laws, or are we handcuffing ourselves? And I think actually it is going to make it easier, make us more agile and able to move more quickly, but for minor things, it is not going to be such a harsh thing with a criminal record. I use the flooding at Royal that we had heard examples of, and, you know, all of the same remedies would have been available to us, and we still would have been able to help the folks there like we did. And it perhaps may have even been easier for us, because there would have been a lower burden of proof, since it is not a criminal conviction. So I'm supportive of this and the other, because I do think it will help us, you know, with everything.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, anybody else out there have any issues with the zoning ordinance going? No, I didn't think you would. Okay. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on 01219?
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number six on tonight's agenda?
Ordinance number O-1319, first reading of the city council of the city of Berkeley, Michigan, to amend sections 26-333, 30-112, 30-705, 74-1, 82-362, 94-15, 126-49, and 130-35, and to add sections 26-2, 86-69, 126-27, and 130-80, to change violations of vacant and neglected property registration requirements, business license requirements, operating a valet parking service without a license, assisting minors to violate curfew, noise, building code, water and sewer systems, trees, shrubs and bushes, noxious weeds, use of parks, and sign regulations from misdemeanors to municipal civil infractions.
Is there a motion to approve O-1319?
Motion to approve.
Support. Motion approved by Councilmember Stedman with support from Councilmember Henon. Similar to what we just talked about, with the exception, this is not part of the zoning ordinance, so we can go ahead and make some additional corrections in other parts of our code book. Mr. Baumgarten, anything else?
Yes, Mayor. As you see from the specific sections highlighted here, we were deliberate in those items that are being converted from misdemeanor to municipal civil infraction. There are still, there is still a purpose for having misdemeanors within our code of ordinances, so this is not a carte blanche change, but it's in very specific areas where we believe it's appropriate and that, as Councilmember Henon alluded to earlier, will make enforcement and gaining compliance easier.
Including assisting minors to violate curfew, huh?
Yes, sir.
The reason that that one is there, because the minor who violates curfew is only responsible for a civil infraction. So we felt to be consistent, the person who assists the minor shouldn't be punished anymore severely. These matters that are before you, we kind of plucked what I'll call the low-hanging fruit, the ones that seem pretty obvious to apply this new tool to municipal civil infractions, like the building code, for the same reason that Mr. Henon mentioned with regard to zoning and drainage. It will actually make our ability to enforce more effectively and efficiently. It will streamline the process more so than proceeding as a misdemeanor, which, you know, which frankly, we have to follow the same procedures that we would if we were prosecuting somebody for a felony. I mean, it's the same things, write to a jury trial, prove beyond a reasonable doubt, all those sorts of things that seem to be way more than what we need for most basic code violations. I think we will find, as we go along, we brought to you tonight the ones we thought were obvious candidates. There will surely be more, which, if this passes, we'll be bringing those forward to you as we identify them or as council desires. So this isn't necessarily end, this is the start. And, oh, and as was mentioned, we are not through this ordinance, nor do we intend to decriminalize things that are more typically and traditionally penal in nature, you know, assaults. Those sorts of things will, are criminal, and they will continue to be. Drunk drivings, those sorts of things.
Right. Thank you. Additional comments from council?
My name is Andrew Asimacher. Gardner Road. Resident for 10 years. I served two years on the zoning board, and one of the frustrations was trying to, what you've guys noticed now, and I really appreciate what you're doing, I think it will really help the zoning board, and I want to thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Okay. Seeing no additional comments on this, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on 01319?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes, but I said zero, and it's a Yes, but I said zero, and it's O, pretty clearly. It's O for ordinance, not zero for ordinance, so I just wanted to make that clear. Yes, thank you. We now move on to item number seven on tonight's agenda.
Resolution number R-2719, matter of adopting a resolution of the Berkeley City Council to adopt the City of Berkeley Emergency Operations Support Plan.
Motion to support R-2719 made by Councilmember Blanchard. Approved by the Mayor Pro Tem.
She gets support on that, too.
I think he supported it as well.
Mr. Baumgarten?
Mr. Mayor, I defer to our expert in the room.
Councilmember Blanchard.
Thank you. One of the requirements of being in Oakland County with the population that we have is that we have a support plan to Oakland County's Emergency Operations Plan. That plan has to be revised every four years. We have done that. Subcommittee of Councilman Gavin, Councilwoman Dean and I went through the plan, reviewed it all, updated it. In, our current plan expires on 9th of November, so we're bringing it forward tonight for review. It is basically the same as the previous plan with just updated references and more current wording, based on the county's new plan. Every time the county plans changes, our plan has to change to fall in line with it. So, that's where we are tonight. Any questions?
He can answer all of them.
That was a dare.
Are there any comments on this plan? Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, actually more of just a thank you to Councilmember Blanchard. He spent a lot of time doing this for many years, so city's very lucky to have him, so thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dean?
And I second that as well as, I'm really grateful that you asked me to assist you with that. I learned a lot in the process, and I can tell all of you, whether you're here or listening at home, we have a plan here in Berkeley. So, any emergency, I mean, everything down to the last detail. Sleep well tonight. It's a good one.
Additional comments? Seeing none. All right, thank you, Councilmember Blanchard, and thank you, everybody else who played a hand in updating this very important document for the city. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R-2719?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Now move on to item number eight on tonight's agenda.
Motion number M-8219, matter of approving the purchase of a Speed Alert 18 Radar Message Trailer from All Traffic Solutions, 12950, World Gate Drive, Suite 310, Herndon, Virginia, 20170, for $9,868, utilizing the budgeted funds and the equipment account, number 101-310-982-000.
Is there a motion to approve M-8219?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mayor Pro Tem with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgarten?
Mr. Mayor, your packet on this includes the specs for the trailer as well as memos from the Department of Public Safety authored by Director Kane, who was unfortunately not able to be here this evening, but this item is represented by Lieutenant Jordan Kobernick.
Lieutenant?
Thank you.
Good evening. So, we get a ton of complaints about residential speeding, and right now, we really don't have a mechanism to address it, outside of sending a patrol car there with a pad of paper and filling in, taking their actual measurements and then filling it in. It's problematic as one there in a patrol car, and generally, when that happens, we found that the speeding isn't an issue, and tends to be the theme, is that people just misjudge how fast cars are going. The nice thing about this trailer, it's going to record the speeds, and also we'll have access to that data to either, and if there's an issue, we'll obviously put cars there. So, it's really a resource multiplier. We can put cars, because we're running 18,000 calls a year. We really have to be specific where we put our resources, so this gives us the opportunity to do that, so.
Questions for Lieutenant Kobernick? Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for your continued work with this. I appreciate the steps we've already taken for the fixed installation ones. I know there's one eastbound on 12 Mile and northbound on Coolidge that gives us some indication of traffic patterns and behaviors, and some interesting data that we've seen early from those installations. So, I applaud the continued effort to take it on the road, so to speak, with these. Now, trailer, we don't mean like a big truck trailer. It's actually like this little thing with wheels, and it's got the big flashy sign on it and stuff like that.
Correct. It's towed by a truck, so it'll be towed by the department pickup.
Right.
The mechanism for actually deploying it's going to be probably generated by a complaint. When that doesn't happen, it'll just be used proactively in different areas that we deem necessary. Again, it's going to record the data. It's not going to issue violations. That's not legal in Michigan, so it's just going to record the data, and then we can reflect where the issues are and address the hotspots that way.
Right, so it doesn't like take a picture of your license plate or any of that kind of stuff? It just knows, oh, there goes another one.
It's just taking, taking the speed. That's all it's taking is a speed measurement.
And then we work, I'm sure there's guidelines and recommendations about placement of the machinery, and then duration, like how long to stay in a given spot to get a reasonable sample set and that kind of stuff?
Yeah, so that's part of us figuring out the actual mech for deploying it. It's about 10 days, I'd say 10 days in cloudy skies with the solar on it, which is plenty of time to figure out if there's an issue there or not. We can bring it back, recharge at that point, and if it's a continuation, you can redeploy it, but at that point, we'd be deploying officers to the area to actually work on enforcement.
Great. If we were to move forward with this, what kind of timing would it take for procurement and delivery and installation and training and things like that?
Six to eight weeks for delivery is my understanding, and then training's pretty straightforward.
Nice. Thank you.
Councilmember Dean?
Thank you. I just have a question about the batteries, because I, from reading this, I couldn't really understand, how many batteries are in it, and do we have backup, like so when those need to be charged, do you have other ones that we can put in while, sorry, while the other ones are charging?
My understanding is, it's like imagine two car batteries, basically.
Okay.
So, those are always charging, then if it's obviously sunny out, those are going to charge via solar. But when it comes back in, I imagine it won't be in there more than 24 hours. We can go address the next complaint.
Oh, okay.
Or, but look at additional batteries. That's something I haven't looked at yet, the cost of those.
Okay.
But if it's that, you know, if it's needed that badly, then we can look at that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. This can be deployed and set up by just one individual, is that correct?
Yes, sir. It's lightweight, it can be moved, just taken off the pickup.
And how do we access the data from it?
So, there's, our signs now are done by Bluetooth. Get in within 10 feet of it, and it'll give you the data. This comes with one year of cloud data. I'm not sold, it's early to tell, but I'm not sold that we need that. It's $1,500 a year, the first year's free. I'm not sold we're going to need that continuation of that data. I think if you're a large city, metropolitan city, and you have 15 of these things deployed throughout your city, that makes sense to have the data coming in, but to go out there, if this thing's out there 10 days, bring it in, download the data and look at it. There's some warranty options that come with it, with that additional 1,500 a year that we'll need to explore, but in terms of retrieving the data, I don't think, me personally yet, not seeing it, I might be, you know, speaking prematurely, but I don't see that being a recurring cost.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions for Lieutenant Kobernick? Seeing none. Thank you, Jordan, for bringing this and representing the Public Safety Department tonight. We look forward to having this there and seeing how fast we're all going on the side streets. Sounds like it's going to be here by Christmas? Perfect. Merry Christmas.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, buddy. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll, unless we have a comment on this? Andrew, no? Okay, all right, just wanted to make sure.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
We now move on to agenda item number nine, please.
Resolution number R-2819, matter of adopting a resolution to remain engaged in the Redevelopment Ready Communities Program.
Is there a motion to approve R-2819?
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Gavin with support from Councilmember Dean. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We continue to make progress in the Redevelopment Ready Communities Certification Process. We come now to a step where, now that we have received our baseline study, now that we've received our presentation from Representative of the MEDC, now the local governing body evaluates those standards as well as administration, and decides if they want to remain engaged in this program to one day reach our certification. That's the point that we come to this evening. Administration has had the chance to look over very closely the recommendations for incorporating best practices into our day-to-day operations. Those best practices come to us through the Redevelopment Ready Communities Program. We think they're well within line with the direction that we'd like to go. They make good improvements to our operations as well as the level of customer service that we're able to provide, and so administration would like to recommend with governing body that we do remain engaged in this program and seek certification.
Thank you. Questions or comments on being a Redevelopment Ready Community? We've, as Mr. Baumgarten mentioned, we went through the presentation, seemed to have support, makes a lot of sense for us here, this keeps us engaged. Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a quick question for City Manager. Do we have an idea how much longer it'll take? I've seen anything from two years, or two months to two years. Do we have a scaled-down timeframe of where we might be?
I can project that we'll be about two years. A significant portion of this is going to be reflected in our master plan. That process is likely to take at least 12 months, so I think two years is a safe bet.
Thank you.
Additional questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R-2819?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Well, I don't really feel well, so we're just going to fold it up there for the evening. It appears that we have a number of folks here looking to hear what's going to happen with our next item. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number 10 on tonight's agenda?
Ordinance number O-1419, first reading of a zoning ordinance of the City Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, to amend Sections 138-364, 138-383, 138-388, 138-418, 138-428, 138-443, 138-458, 138-473, 138-488, and add new section 138-528 to Chapter 138 Zoning to establish zoning requirements for marijuana businesses.
Is there a motion to approve O-1419?
Motion to approve.
Support. Motion approved by Councilmember Dean with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Okay, before I hand this over to Mr. Baumgarten, I would like to make sure that everybody is aware of what tonight will not be. It will not be an opportunity to pitch us on your business ideas, or show me what a successful business you have been able to run to this point. This is council discussing what the city, and hearing input from the residents, on what the expectations are for our community, what we, you know, where, when, how many, everything that's in the next two items on the agenda. So, I will make it abundantly clear that if you do choose to come up to the microphone and start telling me or us why you are the best person to be here in the City of Berkeley, and why this space needs to do this, I will ask you to sit back down, and if I have to use my little hammer here, I will use it, because we need to be able to have this discussion without trying to get off the rails and having a number of other things. Tonight, we are focused on the two items that are at hand, the zoning requirements and the regulations. There will be ample time in the future for those other conversations. I hope that is very clear. If not, I don't get to use this thing very often, but I don't have a problem doing it. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've been discussing this at length for quite a while now, ever since the voter approved Proposal 1 on the November of 2018 ballot. What comes before this body this evening is the much anticipated zoning and the next item, the regulatory framework for permitting no more than three marijuana businesses in the City of Berkeley, under both the Medical Act as well as the Proposal 1 and these emergency laws, emergency regulations that were put out by the LARA, which is the Licensing and Regulatory Affairs Department in the State of Michigan. So, in your packet this evening, again, in addition to the text of the two ordinances, we've also included memos from myself, our Community Development Director, a draft map of the areas that we're proposing, be both green for go, not for the materials that we're discussing this evening, and then red for areas that would not be permissible. Also, we have a draft, and I cannot stress that enough, of the application, the scoring metric that we'll use to score the applications that will be coming in, as well as a general flow chart of how the ordinance proposes that these items go from being mere applicants to approved locally, and then returning back to the state for the remainder of the process. Starting with the zoning ordinance, this item went through Planning Commission's normal routine. It was, went to actually a pre-conversation before we asked the Planning Commission to act at all. We went over what we were proposing. That proposed ordinance evolved a bit, came back to the Planning Commission for their public hearing, as well as the requested recommendation. Planning Commission did recommend that generally be accepted as is, but with the addition of the items coming before them as a special land use instead of merely a site plan approval. That was the most significant change from the draft that existed prior to Planning Commission's review, which I know has been shared with council as well as on the city's website publicly. That has been reflected in the text of this ordinance, as well as the process flow chart included in your packet. I'm not sure if I can respond, I can be answered, I should say, City Attorney would be able to answer any questions. We are joined also by our Community Development Director, Aaron Schluto.
Sure, Aaron will actually come on up here.
And then myself, I would also be available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, while Aaron is making her way, Mr. Staren, from a legal perspective, obviously we are crafting a zoning ordinance here. Anything based on the differences between what, you know, what has come from the Planning Commission, anything we should be aware of?
Well, the most significant change that came from the Planning Commission from the draft that had been presented is not the location of, or were the permissible locations, I should say, of where marijuana businesses would be allowed, but rather, instead of the marijuana businesses being permitted uses, the Planning Commission changed that to special land uses. We can do that, but that is concerning for a couple of reasons, and I'm questioning whether that's necessary, and I apologize, I was not, I was not at the Planning Commission meeting, so I did not know that it was going in that direction, nor did I have the opportunity to comment on it. I think ordinarily with, it might make sense to do this, but when you come, when you consider it in combination with the licensing ordinance, it seems like having a special land use process is somewhat redundant and duplicative. It also potentially creates some additional standards by which the use may or may not be permitted, which are in addition to the couple of dozen of standards that are in the licensing ordinance, and that will be subject to the scoring criteria and table that the city manager went through. I want, I think we need to be very, very careful to have as clean and objective of a process as to who are going to be the successful licensees and who aren't, which to me makes the more general and discretionary standards that come with special land use approval, makes those a little more concerning to me. We are anticipating, I guess we'll find out soon enough, but we are anticipating that we will probably have more... we will probably have more candidates for licenses than we will actually have licenses. So I'm just suggesting we want to keep this process as clean as possible, and the idea was through the licensing ordinance, we would basically accomplish what would ordinarily happen through special land use approval and then some. It'll be a very tight process where the council ultimately will be making the licensing decisions, and those licensing decisions will be made based on a number of criteria, not the least of which are, you know, who are the applicants, where is it to be located, and, you know, and we would be looking at all of the facts and circumstances surrounding a particular location. Again, I think it'd be somewhat redundant to have the special land use process because that's exactly what council's going to be doing through the licensing ordinance.
So I, before we move on, Erin, so I think from my understanding, my interpretation at least at the Planning Commission level and then from the residents that I've spoken to about this particular issue, the special land use seems that it's being leveraged more as just an additional opportunity for resident engagement, not that the special land, because as you mentioned, we have all the regulations in place. I think that is more of the, at least the crux of what I was, at least my understanding is it just gives residents another opportunity to at least, you know, speak to the Planning Commission, speak to council before moving through the final process. I will tell you, I guess I'll just go ahead and jump into this. I am not overly excited about the special land use for this. Special land use typically is used when there is a use that potentially could conflict with or encumber other uses in the area, and I don't think personally that, to me, it sends a signal that this is not a principal use or a use by right. Instead, it is something that, yes, we're going to have the process, yes, we're going to have the applications, we're going to figure out who gets the most points on the, from the metric, and then what is the special land, I mean, I'm not sure what that vote is going to change other than allowing folks be input, and I think we need to make sure that we have ample opportunity for our residents to be engaged, but I don't know that special land use is the only mechanism that we need to be able to do that.
No, and mayor, it could lead to potentially different opinions because our special land use is, that's the Planning Commission's function, and they make the decision, whereas the City Council is making the decision on the licensing ordinance. And so I have a concern about potential inconsistencies there as well. I think there are ways to have citizen engagement. We can even build more citizen engagement even into the, you know, the licensing ordinance that we have now. There's absolutely no intention to, to limit that, but we do need to have a fairly streamlined process that's consistent with the statutory authority that's been thrust on us by the state legislature, or actually more accurately by the voters, and work within that process. And that's my concern. We should either have a licensing ordinance or a special land use function. I don't think it's a good idea to have both.
All right. Community Development Director?
Good evening.
Hi, Erin.
Good evening.
Why don't you give us your feedback from the meeting and how we got to this point, please?
Okay. At the City Council's direction, the city administration started working on putting together the regulatory framework for the marijuana ordinances. And part of that allowed for the uses and where the uses would be, and that would be regulated within the zoning ordinance. Per the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, the zoning ordinance amendments require at least one public hearing wherein the community's planning commission shall receive public comment and make a recommendation to the legislative body. The Planning Commission held their public hearing to review and seek the comment on the proposed zoning ordinance amendments on September 24, 2019. At that time, the proposed amendment would permit the marijuana businesses permitted by right within the Coolidge downtown 11-mile gateway, industrial, local business, office, 12-mile, and Woodward districts. Basically, pretty much the retail, commercial districts. The zoning ordinance would also include the regulation of the location of such marijuana businesses with a 1,000-foot separation from existing public and parochial K through 12 schools and a 500-foot separation from major roadway intersections. Now, these intersections are at Greenfield and 12-mile, Coolidge and 12-mile, Woodward and 12-mile, Woodward 11-mile, Woodward, or Coolidge 11, and 11-mile and Greenfield. Following the public hearing, the Planning Commission members engaged in discussion about the use of the marijuana from permitted by right to special land use. After a lot of discussion, they determined that they would be more comfortable with having the decision be made through the special land use approval process that would require the public hearing. Properties within 300 feet of the proposed location would be notified of the intended use at that location. It would be published in the local newspaper, and the Planning Commission would then make the recommendation to the City Council. The Planning Commission felt that the type of use that the proposed marijuana businesses, they felt that they wanted to give the residents, specifically those within 300 feet of the proposed location, as much opportunity to speak publicly about the proposed use at the end of their street or the end of their block. The Planning Commission formally recommends the special land use for marijuana businesses in all the districts that I specified earlier. That'll take any questions.
All right. Well, we've got a couple of things that we need to discuss as a council. First, it seems we need to, special land use or some sort of alternate mechanism to ensure that our residents remain engaged and are notified throughout the process. And secondly, a conversation about 500 feet from the gateways, if that is a yes or a no. So let's start with the special land use. Where does council fall, feel, I guess, on this? Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, certainly, I agree with the spirit of what the Planning Commission is doing by adding that formalized public hearing for folks to have, that mechanism for people to have more input. And so I guess what I would, I like that a lot, and I think that if we are going to not accept the recommendation, I'd like to see a more built-out, formalized process about what that would actually look like. So right now, it's just, it's, you know, it's a little influx, a little, you know, kind of theory, yeah, we want to make sure we encourage public input, but if we're not going to accept the recommendation of what that public input, formalized, would actually look like, I'd like to see, I'd like to see it on administrative side, figure out the formal process for that.
Just going off of that, what if that process looked similar in terms of noticing to what a special land use potentially could look like, just to make sure folks are aware?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think that would be good. I think the noticing aspect of it, yeah, certainly makes a lot of sense, but I also would want to find out a little bit more about what it would actually look like in practice. So, I mean, is, are people going to be able to come to some sort of open meeting? Or what it would, what that would actually look like?
So here's the other thing, what if somebody did come to the special land use meeting, and you just keep bringing things up that I keep running through, and say, no, I don't, I don't want that?
Well, I mean, planning-
Just because they don't, so then, is that a reason to deny the special land use, even though we have it as something that we've said we're principally wanting to allow in the community?
Yeah, I think as with any other situation where someone comes in front of Planning Commission to say they may or may not like something, it would be up to the Planning Commission to decide and then recommend us.
What if the Planning Commission denies every special land use that ever comes up because it has marijuana in it? I'm not saying that's going to happen, but-
Yeah, I'm tough with the hypothetical, but-
Yeah, okay, all right. Councilmember Henan?
Yeah, I'm going to build off of that, you know, I do think the public input section is necessary. From a logical perspective, you know, these aren't different than tobacco stores, these aren't different than alcohol stores, but, but the reality is they are different in our climate right now, and we need to treat them differently. And I do think we need to have a public input method, and it needs to be meaningful public input. And by that, I mean that it can actually change minds, not that the input is after the decision's already been made. I was brainstorming while, you know, some of this discussion, and some of the thought how this could happen in the licensing processes, you know, they narrow it down to the three, and that's of course just the first time around, then it would be any time an application comes forward. Do the notice in the newspaper, the 300-feet diameter to postcards, and have a public comment period where people can submit written comments, and then that can be used as an input into the evaluation matrix. And it's, now, someone saying, I don't want it in my backyard, is not a valid reason under zoning laws. The, you know, the reasons have to be valid planning principles on why it would not be there. I like, I want the public input part because there can sometimes be things that are just overlooked, that, you know, even a team of people looking at, you know, don't realize something that the people on the ground, the community that live right there might see, and it may be a completely valid reason why that may not be an acceptable reason. Can I think of any examples of those off the top of my head? No, but there could be something, and I want the possibility for that input.
Okay. I guess we'll keep moving right around. Councilmember Dean?
So, just to continue the conversation, I do like the, what I perceive to be a layer of transparency in the process by special land use, but two points that have been made already, could that be built in administratively and with, to, I think Councilmember Henan said, just with the notice and all of that? So I would be in favor of that. I think it's very important, this is all new. It's all new to all of us, and so we're trying to do the absolute best that we can, and I think we have to be careful and strategic moving forward. So, thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, yep, continuing, continuing the theme. We are at an inflection point in our society and at the state and here in the city. This is, remains illegal at the federal level, but there's been enough precedence at the other states that these kinds of things move forward, so, but yet, we are at a different time now than we are, as was mentioned, between, you know, alcohol licenses, tobacco licenses, those types of things, that I believe, given where we're at right now, will probably be different than where we as a society and the state and the laws are five years from now. But given where we're at, I think we do need to take that extra time to be thoughtful and transparent in this, in this journey here. I do like the idea of the special land use. I think having awareness of any potential issues, we could certainly work through that in terms of the refinements to make sure that we minimize any potential risks that proposal might bring about. I think having an opportunity to, for the noticing, that's already part of the process rather than inventing another one, would be of help, and also to provide opportunities for both the residents and the neighboring businesses, but also the applicants themselves to make their case. You know, there might be, you know, tonight's not the time to have that discussion about what their amazing, you know, vision might be and how this would be, you know, something to be happy about, but at some point, they need to be able to make that case in a way where folks can interact and speak with them. And I like having the additional layer of communication and conversation around that so that when the recommendation does come to council, whether it is to approve or to deny, right, that could come as a denial to us, we, as a community, would be pretty well-informed on the opportunity and use the second round of conversations to clarify or hammer out anything that may be an issue. So I'm leaning towards supporting the Planning Commission. I'm pleased that they were willing to step in and help be a part of this process, and I'd like to give them a chance to do it.
Thank you. Councilmember Stedman?
I am not supportive of the special use because I do think it does add another layer of meetings, time, and so on and so forth, and, but I would support more public input once the selections are made in terms of where the location would be.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a question for Community Development. Will a special land use zoning requirement require that the applicant go to the Planning Commission twice?
They could do their special land use and their site plan at the same time.
Okay, thank you.
But their, but the special land use would be contingent upon site plan approval and the other, and the other.
Okay, so it'd make it a little more complicated, but I kind of agree with most of the council that I think this, we want to be transparent, I think we can do that under administrative thing. I don't know that we need the special land use to make sure that we get the notification to all the residents, I think we can do that another way, so, thank you.
All right. So, just to clarify with what I started, I'm not opposed to a special land use because it's a special land use. I think that the signal, though, that the special land use potentially sends is that this is not the type of business, one, that we're looking to have, or that we're proud of having in the city, and secondly, which we'll get to in a minute, the 500 feet of the gateways, again, yes, we're okay, but we don't want to have it where people see it right away when they come in. If we are moving forward with it, and it sounds, at least based on prior council votes, that we are, then we need to embrace that, and we need to not, you know, just necessarily try to sneak it into certain areas or create a separate special land use for this type of business, which maybe in the next five years isn't going to be an issue, but it is something certainly right now. Unlike we do for liquor, where we have to approve a liquor license even after the process, council has to approve that with this type of license right now, at least according to state regulations, I'm correcting, Mr. Sterren, that is not a part of the process, doesn't have to be, correct? Unlike the, what we have for liquor right now, where we have to stamp every liquor license.
No, this will be something where they are required to get a local license as well as a state license. It's not simply a state license, which is the, you know, with the, with liquor, where we're basically just a recommending body and the state makes the decision. This, we will have concurrent jurisdiction.
So with that being in mind, knowing that council is going to have to ultimately approve this license from whatever the three, whoever we figure out, knowing that that's going to be the case, after we go through the process and there are three, the three highest applicants, and we notice and we make sure that we're allowing for resident input in all of those different places, before council ultimately has to make that decision and approve that, I think that'd be a great time to be able to do all of that administrative, all of that community engagement. If we're going to walk through that process anyway, and I think council ultimately does need to have a say in this, I just think we can allow our residents to be engaged without having to make this look like it's something that we're not ready to do, we're proud that we're doing, or happy that we're doing. I just, I just worry about what that means, and the 500 feet from the gateways is something as well. I don't, I don't see personally a need for that. If that's where it is, that's where it is. But again, that's me personally, and I want to thank the Planning Commission for all the work and the time that they've spent in this. I'm not trying to minimize that or just disagree to, for the point of disagreeing, I just personally, as we talked about earlier, we all want to have the ability to share our opinions, and that is my perspective on how, I would like to see this ordinance move forward as it relates to our, to our community. So, we need to, yeah, go ahead.
So I want to clarify something there. You are suggesting that council has the final say, that it comes before council for a final vote before a license is approved.
Mm-hmm. Okay. At which time the applicant would have the opportunity to speak, and residents would certainly have the opportunity to speak, and in between, from the applicant being selected in one of those top three to our next meeting, have plenty of time to notice and make sure residents are aware of what's happening.
So I'm undecided on that. On the one hand, it gives a relief if we think that administration has made a mistake in their selection and so forth, but it also can turn it, what is typically an administrative process, into a political process. And so I see pros and cons on both sides of it.
Well, we don't need to necessarily answer that right now. I think we have the special land use, so I just wanted, I guess, to take a quick straw pull around special land use, yes or no? quick straw poll around special land use, yes or no? We'll start over here because I started over there last time.
No.
No.
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes, but if we can find that alternative, then I'm, I'm not married to the idea of special land use.
I would echo that for me to be a no, and the reason I hesitated is there has to be the public input process codified in the law, not just that we're going to do it, but actually codified.
Agreed.
I'm on that boat too.
To kind of boomerang back around, I likewise, my intent, I think I made clear of what I'm hoping to see. I do not feel comfortable that we've clarified it enough, just in our conversation right now, that we'd be able to support something moving forward. So, I think we need to see some additional work on that. But yeah, the intent is to have that additional layer of notice and opportunities for all parties involved, including the residents, the neighboring businesses and the applicant to be able to, to make their case and, and be heard.
So, do we then all agree that we need to do something to make sure we have that ability here? Does not necessarily have to be through a special land use to accomplish that, it can be codified in the ordinance and we'd be happy with that. Okay. The 500 feet from the gateways, yes? Any issues there? Have a problem losing on this? Councilmember Henin?
So, I looked up the, these generally overlap with our gateway districts and, you know, I looked at what are other businesses that are allowed in there, you know, without any special use, you know, a generally recognized retail business whose principal activity is the sale of commodities on the residence in a completely enclosed building, including baked goods and other food items, dispensed for consumption off the site, drugs and pharmaceuticals. So, I, I don't know why we would treat this differently. I am not imagining that our sign ordinance is going to allow the kind of things we see on Eight Mile. They are going to be, I really believe they are going to be tasteful places that you may not even know it's there if you're not looking for it. And, you know, when I have visited Oregon and Washington, they were there and until you, like, went into the strip mall to get Chinese food, there's like, oh, there's a dispensary right there. So, you know, they are relative, they can be made so that they are relatively unobtrusive and not going to be sticking out. If, if we don't want those kind of businesses, if we don't want, you know, businesses whose, retail businesses who are selling food and drugs and so on, we need to be changing our definition of our gateway district to be what we do want in those areas. But I think we're either need to be heading in that direction, changing it for everybody, or we need to allow it for these uses as well.
Okay. Ross?
Yeah, I certainly can't argue with your read of it, Councilmember Henin. The only thing that I just, I think about is that if we try to keep some establishments a little bit closer to 11 Mile, 12 East of Coolidge, Woodward, it's not so much because they're trying to hide them, I don't think, but if harnessing these establishments as sort of a tool for economic development in some of these areas that we want to look to reinvigorate a little bit, you know, I think that maybe could help jumpstart the thinking on a, you know, what we, what we, what our vision is for some of these areas. So, your read on that, I, yeah, I, I agree with.
Is that a yes or a no on the 500 feet? Be clear.
It would be, I think we could allow them in the gateway, yeah.
And to go off of that, you know, one of my questions was, in the proposed scoring matrix, it's not finished yet, but that we would emphasize 11 Woodward, 12 Mile, and my question was, why are we trying to hide that away? And, and it's, no, it's to use this as a development tool. And those are, you know, are Coolidge and 12 Mile, most of 12 Mile is better developed, more developed, there's more development potential in those other places. And using this as a planning tool to help redevelop areas that may not otherwise be as desirable for redevelopment, that I find is a useful tool. And I think by default is going to move them, you know, the scoring of those gateway areas that are, for most of them, doing okay right now, they will be scored lower likely with the proposed matrix, you know, not part of the law, not what we're deciding on tonight, but, you know, what, the draft we have in front of us now.
So, to be clear, you are both on the no?
Yes, correct.
Thank you. Councilmember Dean?
Oh, you could add me to the no.
Mayor Protem?
I'm there too.
Councilmember Stedman?
No, and I would also consider recommendations for all of the green areas we have on here and, and make those gateway areas green.
Okay. Councilmember Blanchard?
Okay.
Is that a yes or a no?
Yes.
I guess that it's no.
There were already enough. So, the 500 feet appears at councils plus, we don't want to, you know, necessarily just restrict in those areas as well. And on the special land use or no special land use, until we have an option that otherwise satisfies council's desire for transparency and resident input and having some additional engagement, we're not sure yet if we're going to go that direction or not.
Correct.
Fair?
Thank you. Yep, I do think that the, the 500 feet thing would be an easy strike from the proposed ordinance here.
Yes.
And in terms of not going with the special land use, I'd love to see just a brief rationale because that is an existing mechanism that's been tried and true and, and seems to have been successful in the past. So, I'd like to, you highlight some potential concerns that we should take very seriously. So, I'd like to be aware of why we're not going to use an existing mechanism and instead create a whole new one that's almost like the existing mechanism. And I'm sure there's good reasons. I'd just like that to be part of the, the cover memo or something so that we can move forward with confidence.
Mr. Sterren, would you like to, I guess, just kind of go back over some of the things that you mentioned earlier with the special land use and why some of the concerns you have with special land use for this and how it overlaps potentially?
Well, yes. I mean, I thought first and foremost that there, there was overlap that would create a duplicative and potentially inconsistent process since through the comprehensive licensing ordinance that we haven't got to yet, that's on the next thing on the, the agenda. It's quite a lengthy ordinance and that's because it's chock full of standards and criterias and conditions and restrictions that are all going to have to be vetted and ultimately adjudged by this council is being, being met. And those will include not just the applicant and who the applicant is and what they bring to the table, but we'll be looking at, at location, we'll be looking at building, we'll be looking at investment, we'll be looking at proximity to intersections, proximity to whatever else is around it, we'll be looking at how it fits or doesn't fit or mesh in that particular area with perhaps other, other uses or, or concerns that, that residents may have. My point is that we will be looking at really all of those things through the licensing ordinance before the council makes a decision to approve a license. And it just seems, again, a bit duplicative and potentially inconsistent. If we were to then make that licensing decision after what, if all goes as intended, will be a very thorough vetting process, then we can certainly add to that and insert at a meaningful time, a, a public input process, public notice and hearing process into that before we get to that licensing decision. But then to get to that licensing decision and then say, okay, now that we've approved you for a license, now you need to go through the special land use process, again, it seems duplicative and unnecessary given the, the licensing. Makes all the sense in the world if we didn't have such a thorough licensing scheme, but with the licensing scheme, it, it just seems unnecessary and, like I said, potentially inconsistent. And you'd be applying different standards and, and you'd have a different body doing it, and that's after the council has already made its decision.
Well, if I understand it, wouldn't have come to council yet, right? It would have gone to, so...
It's not, it's not going to go through the special land use process until you've already made your licensing decision. People aren't, people aren't going to go through, nor would we want them to be going through a special land use and site plan process when we haven't even decided whether we're going to give them a license or not. So, they would have to go through that process first and that's, so I said, it would, if, if it was the other way around, but it won't be, but if it was the other way around, it might make more sense, but I don't think it makes sense in the context of a licensing ordinance.
Thanks.
Additional questions, or I shouldn't say questions at this point, comments or ideas on how we want to make sure that we're having the conversation, where we are allowing residents to, to be involved certainly into this process. There've been a number of different ideas thrown out in terms of being able to, you know, noticing residents and allowing for residents to have whatever that period of input is, where they can input, you know, online or on paper or in person so that they have opportunities to engage in this process before any of these are finalized. Because it doesn't really make much sense to go through the application process, approve three and then go back through a process.
Right.
I would imagine we're probably opening ourselves up to additional litigation, which we're probably already potentially looking at, at least in, in terms of what's happened in other communities. So, I certainly do not want to increase the chances of that happening either. Mr. Baumgartner?
What are we looking at from a timeline perspective?
Mr. Mayor, we have in place a deadline on our existing text of our ordinance for our opt-out provision. That opt-out will end on December 31st of this year. The city council still has two additional meetings, but a second reading needs to be in place by our November 18th meeting unless a special meeting is called, but it needs to be placed by that point in order to be effective 30 days thereafter and meet the timeline set by the ordinance. So, we have this meeting for discussion purposes. City council be meeting again to, on October 21st. And, okay, administration can bring a follow-up to the text here based on your recommendations and still meet, and still meet the timeline of a second reading occurring on November 18th.
The worst-case scenario is we pushed back and didn't have the sunset on December 30th and maybe we had to push that back a few weeks, a couple of weeks.
Correct. Council, council could amend the ordinance.
We are running arbitrary timeline of January 1st because that's when the law goes in, or technically the rec becomes...
Right, the state will be ready by December 1st.
But it doesn't say that we have to make sure that we have it all set by then as well. So, we have time to make sure we're doing things correctly, is my biggest concern. There's no reason for us to try to rush and slam things through just to keep them moving, just to hit an arbitrary sunset that we've set. Just, I mean, it's a goal and we certainly would like to be there and hopefully we will, but if not, I don't see that as any affront to the community, either community, the marijuana community or community at large in terms of some sort of signal that we're not moving forward.
Correct. No, I think anybody looking at this process and how it has played out, it should be very clear that the city is working towards this.
All right. So, short of sitting here and us trying to figure out something that makes sense and actually giving ourselves some time to sit down and really think about this and engage, is there an issue with not moving this first or, or the first reading through right now? As writ?
Uh-uh.
Any issues? No?
No.
Just a procedural question. Would a decision to postpone this affect the next item on the agenda or could that move forward independently of this one?
The two, as long as both get passed eventually, the two could move forward on different grounds.
I just was, I just wanted to ensure that this didn't rule out the opportunity to evaluate and potentially approve the next item.
Right. If there's no permission via the zoning ordinance to even allow these uses, then the licensing framework sort of exists in a sort of vacuum until it's actually, until the use is actually permitted to go in, the licensing framework can be passed, but just won't have anything to affect.
Okay. So, Mr. Sterren, Ms. Lutto and Mr. Baumgartner, you guys have heard pretty clearly from council, at least what we're, the type of addition we're looking to, looking for in this ordinance and what we want it to ultimately provide?
Yes, sir.
I think so, and hopefully we can have something, you know, maybe ready for your next meeting so we're not pushing things off into the, off indefinitely. We want to keep this moving.
A procedural question on that, since that will overlap councils, can the second reading for the ordinance be in a new council?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. So, we have motion on the board from Councilmember Dean and Councilmember Blanchard. And just like we did earlier, are we looking to postpone now? Is that the language we're looking at?
Okay. Do we want any public comment?
Yes. Is there any additional comments on this? Ms. Buckler?
There is. Michelle Buckler, Edgewood. So, I am one of the planning commissioners who sent that to you. We did not have everything that you have tonight, and I wanted to touch base on a couple of things. The reason we went towards special land use is because there was nothing in the existing framework that drove or ensured a public input or a public comment, a true public comment. There's always public comment, of course, at any meeting, but that notified the residents in concern. And the optics on this are really poor because I walked through the regulations the way they're written, and I deal with regulations all day long in my life. And I, and I, I went down all the roads and like how this would work, and the reality is, it doesn't actually have to go to Planning Commission because we gave expanded administrative rights to city staff back in November of 2018, or September of 2018, under section 138, 678, for those of you who don't have it in front of you. So, we actually have three businesses right now in Berkeley that we never saw come before Planning Commission. And if they're not going to do a tremendous amount to the facade, it doesn't get a site plan review. So, it would go through a closed-door point scoring system that, there's a lot of arbitrary language in this too, and I think there's probably people in the audience who are like, I don't know what the definition of some of these things are on these scoring things. But the sites already has to be picked in order to fill out the scorecard. Does that make sense? So, this is like, there's kind of a very circuitous route here, and the route is, it cuts out Planning Commission and it cut out public comment. We know that these sites are coming, we're fine with that. I'm fine with them at any point in the city, within the gateway districts, within the corners, it doesn't matter to me. We want a fair, transparent, open process, and yes, people are not going to like that they're at the end of their street. And they should be able to come up and talk about that and why it's a good thing or not a good thing. And they can do the same thing now with a lot of other businesses. And I don't really like the mayor's comments about our, we might never pass a special land use. We do pretty good at them. We've had a couple challenging ones, I mean, in the past years, but that was our only mechanism to, to deal with it. If you want to rewrite this ordinance that has a defined path where it goes in a very straight line through the processes, then we're fine with it. But we didn't have that in front of us and we felt a little rushed in all of this. We asked for something the first time through, it came back in a different form yet again. So, go back to the August Planning Commission meeting and then look at the September Planning Commission meeting. We asked for something in August and we didn't get it in September and we had to redo it again. So, we're not going to write these on the fly. And I feel like you're saying a little bit of the same thing. There's the, the process for the, the point system, it's great, that's a great, that's a great idea to have some kind of transparent, there needs to be more definition around this, in my opinion. But I just didn't, I didn't, we didn't know, like, what, like, the intent of the city, it seemed like this could purely land in city staff, the way it's written now, except then it comes to you. So, that's why it came to you as a special land use permit.
Well, thank you, Michelle, for being here and explaining that for, you know, a lot of times, residents may go to the Planning Commission, watch the Planning Commission meetings and not actually understand what, if any, direction the Planning Commission has given in all of this, other than council says, yeah, we want to do something, and then it just all of a sudden falls in your lap without a lot of potentially additional context. And it sounds like probably could have used a little bit more time as well, kind of like we're doing, choosing not to write it on the fly right now. So, I think procedurally, that's something that we have to, as a city and with Aaron, do a much better job of communicating and make sure the Planning Commission has all of the information. job of communicating and make sure the Planning Commission has all of the information that they need and some, some pretty clear, I'm not saying instructions, because that's not the case, but, you know, at least the ability to get their questions answered and not necessarily feel like they have to be rushed through to make a, a decision. Additional comments today?
Joshua Hunter, resident on Thomas. I also want to comment on the special use designation. Mr. Mayor, I reflect your comments on, on, you know, rejecting it based on, you know, the, because I think the intention is to have the business district allow these for, for any reason, but I see going through the path of special use as a path towards banning them in these, in these districts potentially. Drive-throughs were mentioned during the Planning Commission meeting to justify the special use for marijuana businesses, but I didn't hear any reasons for why they were similar. I don't know the history behind drive-throughs in our ordinance, but I would imagine they create more traffic and noise nuisances than similar businesses without, without a drive-through. But unlike a marijuana business, I don't think the subject of drive-throughs is ever subject to a citywide vote, much less a record-breaking one. I think the city manager and the administration has done an admirable job collecting feedback to ensure this is what residents want, and I think the results have been consistent with the vote from last November. So I hope this process is used for all future issues that require broad input. So, so before any additional zoning regulations are proposed, we need to see the facts to actually justify the special use designation. It's, of course, the Planning Commission's job to, to not do what's popular, but what's best for the city, and detriment to surrounding property from the activity is entire purpose of the special use designation or ordinance. Some question, some fundamental questions are how would these businesses be more detrimental? Which areas would they be more detrimental than others? There was no discussion of this at the meeting. So if the entire purpose is for, to hold a public hearing and notify nearby property owners, then, you know, this can be done administratively. You know, it's my understanding, I could be wrong, but my, my reading of the licensing ordinance is it requires site plan review regardless. I don't know if that's correct, but, you know, I would, I would agree that it should be, should require a site plan review regardless of whether they make a facade change or not. So, like I mentioned, because of, I mentioned that I think this is potentially a path towards a de facto ban in the city, and that's because of how similar and limited the commercial properties are in Berkeley. I think if special use is denied on, for one application, then all the other parcels will be denied, and that would undermine the bill, the will of voters who trusted their city government to carry out their will with reasonable regulations. And I personally chose to live further away from a commercial district, but, you know, I think I'd rather, I prefer to live near one of these facilities instead of a bar or a restaurant. And, you know, they, they can attract rodents, produce smells, noise, have late operating hours, and intoxicate people. You know, that's, you know, that's, that's just, you know, that's just the reality. We, we deal with that, and we're, you know, we're, we're happy with it in general. So, you know, just because a business is new doesn't make it more detrimental. So, and I fundamentally see it as a low-intensity retail exchange. It's just customers exchanging cash for a fairly small product. So I, I can't, I just can't see how it's more detrimental as long as they're subject to, to all the standard codes. And, Mr. Mayor, I agree with your point regarding the 500-foot intersection. I think, you know, we have liquor stores, pawn shops, and tobacco stores, so I don't think there's any reason to exclude, exclude those. So it's, you know, it's been over a decade since medical marijuana was approved in the suburbs, and it's still largely banned, still largely banned. So I, I think the medical dispensary should be permitted by right without question, but, I mean, allowing recreational facilities would make it easier for people in pain and anxiety to access if they so choose. You know, allowing it in a safe, convenient community like Berkeley would greatly improve the quality of life for a lot of residents. So, so I, I'm really concerned about adopting the special use ordinance, special use ordinance. I've asked that you would, you know, not adopt the special use designation and also drop the 500-foot intersection requirement. You have a strong mandate to do so, but if you are still considering the special use or other restrictions, I would just ask that you please provide facts to justify any additional regulations. Thank you.
How's it going? Kurt Hight, Berkeley. I also, I want to echo his sentiments and what some of you have said up here regarding the, the 500-feet gateway. And, you know, by law, there's already, there's a thousand-foot, you know, from the schools, and I think that already limits it, but if you look at and you want to honor what was voted on back in November, it can't be debated that, that the main goal was to regulate it like alcohol. And if I look at the map, or look at what the zoning allows, it allows alcohol all along 12, and I understand it can't go within so far of the schools, but despite that, when you look at it, in the gateway, there's, there's alcohol sales, there's alcohol sales all up and down, coolers, you know, whatever. You're going to limit it to three, and that's fine. I almost wish that it was almost like four or five, so that you could almost say, try to get one on almost every main road, so nobody could say, hey, you're lucky, either you have it, or you're lucky you don't have it. You know, everybody can embrace it or not embrace it, and everybody, maybe if it is for development, can, can reap the, the benefits of that, you know. But like I said, that being said, I, I don't think there's a reason to have the special use, only, you know, you, you had a great suggestion to have it, have a public input as part of the licensing, licensing, and I think that's a, that's a great alternative, because in it, you're approving it at the same time as you're taking the input, you're going to weigh that, and if they get the license, good, they're going to go forward, and if you require the site plan, like I think it does specify is going to happen, they're still going to go for a site plan and it's going to get approved, and, you know, people are going to have a chance to see all that going. But besides that, I do want to thank you all. I, I think the, what's been done so far has been a lot of work, and, and so, you know, me getting up here or somebody else getting up here, I don't think somebody should take that as being, you know, negative or whatever. I, I applaud the efforts to get this done in amount of time that it, I mean, it's, you're, it looks like it's, you're right there. I mean, there's a few little tweaks, but thank you very much for everybody putting all the time and effort that it obviously took to get all the, the wording in there, because so, and, and for, if somebody thinks that this is an attempt to push it off, I hope that they realize that, no, this is not the case. I, I really think that the city has done a great job taking in all of the input and really putting something viable to paper, and, and I think this is, we're, we're well along the way, and so thank you very much.
Thank you, Kurt. All right, we have still another ordinance to go through in terms of the, so let's, let's first take the vote on, well, we have postponed it on the table now, we have it approved, and then we can move on to the second ordinance. So are we all clear? We're voting at this point? Postpone?
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Henan?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. All right, we now move on to ordinance 1519. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read that item?
Ordinance number O 1519, first reading of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Berkeley, Michigan, to add new Article 15 marijuana businesses to Chapter 30 Businesses of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances to adopt local licensing regulations and operational standards for marijuana businesses.
Is there a motion to approve O 1519?
Motion to approve?
Support. Motion approved by Councilmember Stedman, support from Councilmember Gavin. Councilmember Gavin?
Mr. Baumgartner?
Excuse me?
Yes, sir. So, as discussed, there are two portions of this. The first is permitting the use itself, and the second would be, what much discussion has come around this evening, which is, how would we regulate this particular use in the city of Berkeley? This is where the framework actually comes in for how many there will be, some of the places that they would, how, how they would need to be allowed, the process that we would go through in order to, to actually approve some of these items, what specifically the city would be looking for as far as protections for the, for the community at large and the residents. Basically, it, this gets into the operation of the business itself, and there's, there's quite a bit here. This has evolved in a very public sense. We've been putting each and every draft that's come across the, the administration. We've been putting this online so that people can kind of track that progress. We've gotten some good feedback, and, again, this could still proceed forward if the council so chooses, but it just, it doesn't have anything to affect at this time. Mr. Attorney has, has put in a, a great amount of work into this, as has my staff, Dan Hill, as well as Aaron Schluto. This has been certainly a, no, one individual deserves any credit for this. This has been a full-on administrative task.
Mr. Attorney?
The last ordinance was the easy one. This is the hard one. As you can tell by the length of it, and, and I think Mr. Baumgartner's right, we've, we've gone through at least a dozen iterations of this, just to get it off, off the drawing board, just a lot of refinement. There is a lot here. There are a lot of application requirements. I think the comment was made, I think it was by Mr. Hight, that the, you know, the, the, I think the, the general intention of the, the new law was to try to create a regulatory framework, not identical to, but very similar to the way we deal with the sale and distribution of alcoholic beverages, and try to make that work for, for marijuana. And so, to a large extent, that's what we try to do. Through this ordinance, we have tried to, in our requirements, there's a lot of information required, but you'll find that the information we are requesting is largely information that would be necessary for us to make our local determinations that the requirements of the, the various marijuana statutes are, are being addressed, as well as to make sure that we are getting the same information that the state is requiring when they make, when the state makes its own licensing determinations. And then we set forth, well, we define terms, we set forth various standards for our licensing decision, which are supplemented by the, the, the scoring and scoring criteria, and ultimately we would, and we also have conditions in here for once a license has been, thank you, Jack, because that, whatever it is flying around has been bothering me the last 15 minutes. I thought it was my imagination, but we also have, once a license has been issued, various operational requirements too, just to make sure that, that what we have here is going to be compatible and harmonious with what, what we're trying to do and what the residents want us to do here, and to make sure these things do operate as problem-free as possible. I think that's probably all I want to say right now. I'm sure there'll be many questions. I guess there is one more comment, and just to clarify, because we have, we have talked about through this ordinance, this ordinance will cap the number of businesses, and I think it's been thrown around that it will be three. What we're actually talking about here is three sites.
Three locations, yeah.
There could actually be more than three licenses. For instance, you could have a, a medical marijuana licensed facility and a recreational marijuana facility. Two licenses required for that, but they could be located at the same rooftop. Those, the state considers those to be equivalent licenses. So I, I just want to clarify, it's kind of a technical distinction that we, under this ordinance, would ultimately have three sites, three rooftops, but we could technically have more than three licenses if someone was dealing in both the medical and in the, I call it recreational, but I think the terminology has been changed by the state to, we're calling it adult-use marijuana now.
All right, I'm going to reverse this, this time. Anybody out there have any thoughts, inputs on the regulations section before I let council engage in the discussion on this? Sure.
Joshua Hunter? I, I had a, I had a, I guess, a few questions and comments regarding the Section 30-11, license revocation, suspension, denial basis for action and appeal. Under Section B, there's a, two, two questions I had. It says, "A license applied for or issued may be denied, revoked, or suspended on, on any of the following grounds." For subsection four here, it says, "Failure to obtain site plan approval from, from the Planning Commission within six months from the date of receiving license approval from the city." I interpreted that the Planning Commission was required to, to approve the site plan regardless. I, I think that's, that's the intention that, you know, that, I don't know if the administrative change that was made recently conflicts with that, but I think that it's important to have that. And secondly is, if you go down to subsection seven, it says, "The marijuana business is determined by the city to have become a public nuisance or otherwise is operating in a manner detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare." My, my interpretation of that was, they could be following all the, all the other ordinances, all the other sections of this code, but if it was determined by the city, they could have their license revoked. Yeah, I see that's a due process issue. Maybe it's not, but it seems unfair to be able to revoke a license if they're following all the local ordinances and state laws. Those are my questions and comments. Thank you.
Kurt Hight, Berkeley. I just had a question to add on to what he said about the requiring Planning Commission site plan review. Can you add like a, an additional, like, not, not able to be done administratively, so that it does have to have a site plan review by the Planning Commission? I mean, I think that would be a preferable thing, and that way it will go before them, and then it would also give an additional chance for people at least to see what is being approved and, you know, at least weigh in on it, and, and you can, you know, that, that can be taken into account, you know?
We can look at that to make sure it's consistent, and, and just to clarify, that ordinance change that was made was something that allows basically our planning staff to make a determination that something is a minor enough change that we would, we would just review and approve it administratively, rather than send it through the process. I'm not going to put Director Schluto on the spot right now, but I would think that in this instance, she will exercise her discretion very cautiously, and once we, you know, we, we identify the, the three rooftops, if you will, that those are things that will all be submitted to the, the Planning Commission, not just administratively reviewed, and I see absolutely no problem with making that crystal clear in the, the actual text of the ordinance.
Okay.
Hello, Dan Haberman, Birmingham, and very soon will be a Berkeley property owner as well. So, members of council, city attorney, city manager, and city clerk, I appreciate the massive amount of work you've done and the opportunity to speak. I will stay far away from self-promotion. What, what I did want to speak to was the, the draft regs that, that we're seeing, and the merit-based criteria, the scoring matrix, as it might sometimes be referred to, and how they kind of play together in light of what I've heard in attending a number of meetings, whether it be council or planning, and where I've heard in those meetings, most importantly, and time and time again, what I've heard is a desire to find the best operator and the best operations. And so it's with that framework that I, that I review kind of the interplay between these two documents. And there's a concern to me that some of the, the application evaluation criteria, which are listed in 30-904, don't necessarily always match up with some of the weight given to certain factors in the merit-based criteria list. In, in doing so, what that might do is push away from the stated goal, which I think is a wise one, of finding best operators and best operations, and leaning further toward possibly just deepest pockets and largest projects. For example, if we're to look at the second point on the list, and I understand these are drafts and might change, and so I'll try to do it quickly, but this is, this seems to incentivize mixed-use developments. most valuable criteria in the draft matrix. So I think that's something to at least just be aware of in evaluating these factors, and whether or not the city feels that a cannabis business is the best choice to launch a mixed-use development at whichever point in the city. Along the same route, and the embrace-it-everywhere philosophy that we heard earlier, we have the third point on the list. It gives 18 points for very specific locations within the city, which, which to me and to others, sorry if I'm not hitting the microphone properly, would maybe be more of a zoning issue than placing it at the top of the list. Again, the stated goal that I've heard time and time again, best operators and best operations, but on the scoring matrix, factors relating to best operators and best operations are all on the bottom of the list, receiving far less possible points than those on the top, which tend to refer to redevelopment opportunity, which again can be a great goal. It's just not the goal that I've heard stated, stated most frequently. For example, owner-operator would receive seven points, whereas, you know, owner-operators, whether it's in cannabis business or any other business, and here we're talking about it a lot, and often cases, real estate businesses, that a bank, for example, very risk averse institution, as, you know, cities often can be risk averse as well, would look at an owner-operator being a far less risky proposition than pure investment, because owner-operators have skin in the game, because they're there operating on a daily basis. And so again, it goes to score on whether or not the city determines that it's, that it's more important to incentivize that as opposed to just larger developments. And one, one quick final note is, in the draft regs in 30-904(c)(7), there's a reference to, I guess, in essence, excluding or downgrading applicants who have operated at any point in time in illegal business, which, and this one maybe is one for the city attorney, just for research purposes, but to consider that caregivers would have been legal operators, and I don't think they're necessarily hit on in the, in the matrix criteria, adding 12 points to those who have experience in a marijuana business, which prior to 2018 and the implementation, the full implementation of the MMFLA, many of those operators would have been considered under state law to be operating illegally other than caregivers. So again, I think what the city's doing is great. It's thoughtful. It's detailed. It's a boatload of work. And the goals that I've heard expressed time and time again are to find the best for the city, which I think is a great goal, and I commend it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Any additional questions or comments? Have I sufficiently scared everybody from coming up to the microphone tonight? It was not necessarily the intent, but I've heard that if this criteria doesn't necessarily fit where you currently may have property, want to have property, then obviously you're going to want it changed. So the intent was just to have a very frank conversation about where we're at as a community right now. Okay, seeing nobody else running up to the microphone, council, we are still on the second ordinance, the lengthy ordinance that encompasses pretty much everything from a licensing regulation standpoint here. We have already postponed the zoning ordinance, but where do we, what are the big questions on this? We've already talked about, and the city attorney mentioned including, you know, make site plan approval as a part of the process.
And adding a public notice provision in here as well, before any licensing decisions are made.
Okay, public notice provision, certainly. What else, council, on this? Questions, or at least, Councilmember Stedman?
This is a question about the merit-based criteria. It says, "Proposed site is located in the following areas." Now, the map indicates a lot of green areas, but this point that you've made here just limits it to 11-mile road, road from Greenfield to Coolidge, Woodward Avenue, and 12-mile Coolidge to Woodward.
It doesn't say that it can't be in any other areas. It just is additional points for those areas, because that's where we're looking for development.
Okay. All righty. Thank you.
Right. Those sites are looking for a little bit more development. All right. Other questions, regulation comments? Councilmember Henan?
I'm not sure how I feel about this idea, but I'll throw it out there. If this matrix, evaluation matrix is by resolution, it gives the opportunity for public input on things that we might overlook otherwise. But still, not putting it into the ordinance, it gives us some flexibility if we are finding that something needs changed quickly because we're overlooking something.
Mr. Attorney, do we have that agility?
I, I think so, yes.
But I, I don't know if it's a good idea.[957.25][957.25](laughter)
There's, I mean, there's pros and cons. You know, having the, the standards spelled out in black and white in the ordinance makes it certainly crystal clear to all concerned, but it, I mean, you can always amend the ordinance, but it can be cumbersome. It doesn't give you the same flexibility as having your scoring system perhaps referenced in the ordinance, but to be adopted by council resolution. Kind of the same philosophy we have with the various fees that we charge for, for various permits and approvals under the ordinance. Yeah, you can set them forth in the ordinance, but we want them to be more of a, more of a dynamic, fluid process that we can easily and readily change as the circumstances warranting those changes present themselves, rather than going through a whole ordinance amendment process, and the preparation, and the two readings, and the 30-day lag time before the effective date. So I, I think it's a good idea that Mr. Henan proposed to do it by resolution.
Questions on that? Other thoughts on that, by resolution?
I'm actually fine either way. I'm just thinking, in terms of the quantity of licenses, how, how often we would need to tweak this before those three have been allocated? And what would it seem like if we were to approve one with one set of criteria, and then change it, and then approve the second one with a different set of criteria? I must wonder if we should...
I'm not thinking it's going to happen that way so much, because I think you're going to probably be, if what we anticipate, the interest in this is going to be...
There will be more than three people that apply.
You're, you're going to, you're going to be approving your three licenses, or however many it is, for the three locations, probably in one fell swoop.
Right.
But anticipating, just like any other businesses, some do well, some don't do so well, you may have some changes, or, you know, you may find that over time that this works wonderfully, and maybe we want to modify or even expand our process. Three now, maybe, maybe five years from now, it'll be nine. I mean, I, I'm not saying it will, but, you know, a lot of this is, we're getting, we're getting into the unknown. We're trying to, to do the best we can, anticipating upfront and setting forth a regulatory framework to provide the utmost protections against the worst. But we may actually find, as this goes on, that these businesses fit in and blend in, just like the businesses we currently have in the city, and we want to have the flexibility in order to, to do that, as well as learn from our initial experiences. We may find that we need to reevaluate the waiting system, that some of the things we waited more heavily, some of the criteria we waited more heavily than others, maybe we'll find that we had that topsy-turvy.
Thank you. I was just going to comment on that. I think, again, we probably will receive more than three applications, but only three sets, three locate, three rooftop locations will be approved, and I think we'd want to have some degree of consistency in allocating those, rather than moving the goalposts from one to the next.
I agree.
So I applaud the creativity around having the flexibility to adjust this. I'm just not sure in reality if it would make sense to do so while we're mid-flight.
Probably not during the first, probably not during the first round or first flight.
For, for sure. And then as I think about the quantity of licenses, I believe that's in the ordinance as well, so we'd need to revisit the ordinance to change the quantity. Maybe at that time, we could also review the criteria. If we do the first three, and we learn from that, and we see what's working and what's not working, and it makes sense to, to either adjust the criteria and/or the quantity, then we could do so as a thoughtful package.
Certainly.
Councilmember Henan?
Yeah. To be clear, the criteria I'm speaking of are not the ones that are already in the ordinance, but the evaluation matrix that staff has prepared. And it is not a lack of trust in the staff. I am looking at it as a additional level for public input at this stage. And I would definitely agree, it would be a very bad idea for the first round of applicants to have different standards.
Okay. So we have, do you have something?
Mr. Mayor, I was merely going to note that I do anticipate us revisiting this law, at least in the first couple of years, specific to the recreational side, this being a new law. Any new law ends up having a good amount of case law that is developed shortly after it's put into place, and so I do anticipate this coming back before this body to change and adapt to either state law, updates of state law, or updates to pertinent case law here as well. So there will be opportunities, and it's, but I want to note, it's quite likely that however long the first round of businesses end up operating for, the next ones to come along could have different standards based on changes outside of City of Berkeley.
All right, thank you. So we have, unlike the zoning ordinance that we spoke of and postponed, there were a couple of key situations there that we really needed to figure out. In relation to the operational, the regs and operational standards, there are a lot of them. It is lengthy, but are there particular hot-button items that we want to make sure we address as we did with the first one before moving through? Now, again, this is a first reading, so assuming if this even did get approved as a first reading today, there would be time before it came back. It may not come back necessarily at the next week's meeting either, at our next scheduled meeting, I should say, to give everybody ample time to make sure that we're not, again, trying to write ordinances on the fly up here. We want to make sure we have the appropriate amount of time, unless there are, there is something that is very oppositional. Yes?
Thank you, Your Honor. One of the things I want to discuss is section 3905, license limit. We have in here growing facility establishments, class A and class B. I thought that when our previous meeting was discussed, that we didn't think that we had sufficient space or distance from the residents to allow grow operation in the city. And so I was just kind of concerned as to why that, I thought that was out, and why it's back in again, I'd like to know.
To the mayor, the limiting to 500 plants, we felt our building stack would allow some space to allow that, that small threshold. Even some of the changes in the industrial approach that the industry has taken to these growth operations, you could even do 500 plants in a very small space. They stack them, they do a couple of different things, which is why it comes, it's why it has remained in the first reading here. We don't think that you're going to end up seeing, by limiting this small number, A and B, we don't think you're going to see the large industrial-type facilities being, taking over whole blocks for growth operations. But if somebody did want to be a small grower, again, up to 500 plants to support their retail business, that, that option could present itself in the future, and we could, again, move it through a normal licensing process to see if it's the right thing for Berkeley.
Yeah, I would agree with Councilmember Blanchard. I'm not looking for really any other use outside of dispensary at this point. I'm looking at three dispensaries. We can call it rooftops, we can call it whatever we want, but that's what I'm looking for. I think at least what, the conversation that I've heard is what most folks typically are looking for. Now, it doesn't mean in the future, especially as things progress, that that might not be something that we want to certainly revisit, but at least that was my, my understanding. We're headed more towards the retail side of things at this point.
Striking items three through seven, then? Leaving, I actually clarify, leaving adult-use marijuana retail establishments and their, I'm sorry, their medical counterparts? Leaving items one and three?
Right. And no micro-business? Right.
I was going to ask that, I was going to ask that, because the micro-business does have a grow component, with basically a retail adjunct to it.
It's a vertical enterprise.
Yeah. Kind of like the marijuana version of a craft brewery, other than you won't actually be consuming on the site, on the premises.
Yeah, until, I mean, I just don't know how much space that something like that would actually take up, and I don't necessarily know that that's how we want to operate right off the shoot here.
What does the rest of the council think?
Yeah, I think to some degree, there's a crawling-before-you-run kind of thing here.
Okay. So in favor of the one and three?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Councilmember Henan?
So I, I don't feel strongly. I, I would allow all of the types of uses.
Okay. Councilmember Dean?
One and three would be my preference.
Likewise, those conversations with residents have focused on one and three.
Okay. Councilmember Stedman?
I'm not sure, so sure that a small grow operation would be too bad.
Okay.
Councilmember Blanchard?
On three.
I kind of know where, where you are.
On three.
But it seems, at least at this point, one, two, three, four, are favoring one and three at this point. Again, not to say that we aren't ever going to revisit, it certainly is a possibility, but I think in terms of at least, like Councilmember Gavin mentioned, kind of crawling here, focusing on certain things before we expand our universe a little bit.
Councilmember Henan?
Yeah, so while we're in this section, I think, you know, for me, the elephant in the room is that this is illegal, particularly recreational federally. We, you know, have in, for example, our own rules that we just did last week, uphold the Constitution laws and regulations of the United States and never be a party to their evasion. So we do have the federal Roar-Bacher-Bloominar Amendment, which they had easier to pronounce names, but, you know, prohibits federal enforcement against states' medical marijuana laws. I can get behind medical use. I, I think the federal prohibition on, you know, even though for me personally, I think getting high is wrong, you know, but I can't legislate my morality. It doesn't work. And I think the federal prohibitions are just stupid and counterproductive, but they are there, and I don't think we can do recreational use based on our own laws, rules, our ethics, but I can support medical.
Okay. That's fair. You've made that point. And, I mean, it's been consistent, is what I mean. That's, that's fine. Some members may have slightly differing viewpoints, at least in terms of where the state constitution and what we can do based on the election, which is how we got to this point at all. But that is certainly valid, and want to make sure that it is noted. Any other specific bones of contention here in this reg? Because I have decided that we are going to be out before we have to suspend the rules, so make sure your communications are according, but anything else? Because if there are no other substantive problems with specific sections, then we need to decide either, one, we're going to move this first reading forward, or we're going to postpone again and bring back when we bring back the other one. The two are not necessarily mutually exclusive in terms of voting. There were a couple of specific items in the zoning ordinance that we've already mentioned that we're going to be looking towards. So do we feel ready to move forward with a first reading? Again, this is just a first reading. Certainly, changes can be made now in the second reading. Got to get into a quick straw poll here, otherwise we're just going to postpone. Councilmember Gavin, move forward or postpone?
Yeah, I'd prefer to just keep them on the same track.
Okay, so what does that mean, postpone?
Postpone.
Thank you.
We'll postpone.
Postpone.
I'm fine moving forward with the changes that we've made.
I would like to move forward.
Postpone.
No, wrong hand.[1759.15][1759.15](laughter) Okay, well, I was going to say move forward, but since I am only the third, there have already been four votes to postpone. I guess we will keep these on the same track. Councilmember Stedman, Councilmember Gavin, are you okay with amending the motion to postpone?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, with that, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on oh fifteen nineteen?
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. We now move on to communications as a collective. We have 10 minutes. We now move on to communications as a collective, we have 10 minutes to get through communications. Ms. Mitchell, who was up first?
Councilmember Baker.
Okay, well, I get eight of those, right?
Really should have went in the reverse order. Where's everybody going? We have communications here. Guys, hey! We got a meeting still going on. I get it, you were allowed to leave, but let's be a little respectful. I was a teacher and a principal. Go ahead.
Thank you, just a few quick updates. Technology Advisory Committee meets in a few weeks, and they're working on some pretty cool announcements, some kind of cool things that they'll be rolling out here soon. Their next meeting is on the 16th. The DDA had their interviews for executive director candidates to fill that position. A recommendation will be made to the board, the DDA board, this week's Wednesday. And for information on upcoming events in our downtown, please visit downtownberkeley.com. Historical Committee, we have new merchandise available, holiday ornament and a holiday mug, featuring iconic imagery from the city's archives here, and actually, these are new paintings of iconic images. They're selling fast, $10 each, all proceeds go to the museum to help improve and curate additional things. These are available at City Hall, at the library, in the museum, and get them while you can, because they're going fast. Folks from all over the country actually are ordering these, our expats are very interested in these. Museum is open Sundays, 2 to 4, and Wednesdays, 10 to 1. And finally, I'll just briefly close with a quote from Albert Camus, who once said, "Autumn is a second spring when every leaf is a flower." And I won't get into all the things and reasons why I love autumn, it's my favorite season, but we're into that time now, it's beautiful, folks are out walking around enjoying this beautiful city, and doing apple cider, and cake donuts, and pumpkins, and all sorts of fun stuff, it's a terrific season. So let's enjoy this second spring, and every leaf, enjoy it as it blooms. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Stedman?
Okay, for the Citizens Engagement Advisory Committee, they're still working on a communications plan, and the other thing that they've been doing for several months is checking out other websites and finding things in other websites for other cities that could enhance ours, and so that work still goes on. The library, please check their website, they still have many, many activities going on in the month of October. The Friends is having a book sale at the library on Thursday, the 10th of October, from 4 to 8 Friday, the 11th, from 10 to 6, and Saturday, the 12th, from 10 to 3. So please frequent your library on those days and make some purchases. The two book sales that they do, one is at Berkeley Days and the other one in October, are the Friends' biggest fundraisers, and it's what helps them donate lots of money to the library. The Beautification Committee on Monday, October the 21st, is having a fundraiser from 5 until 9 at Bagger Dave's. So if you can make it there, that would be wonderful. Tuesday, the 22nd, they are having a fall cleanup at Oxford Towers Park, and if you would like to come to that, meet at the park at 6 o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just one quick thing, I found out yesterday that October is Chamber of Commerce Month, so I'd like to thank our very active Chamber of Commerce, and I am now drafting a resolution I hope to bring for the next meeting that we can pass to honor our chamber for all the hard work that they do with supporting the city and all the events. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Councilmember Dean?
Touch a Truck happened this past Saturday, it was a great event, lots of families in attendance, the kids had a blast, and there was an added layer of excitement when public safety got called to a suspicious smoke incident. Tail on the Trail Halloween Edition is Thursday, October the 26th, at 6:00 p.m. at J.C. Park. Costumes are encouraged, the start times are staggered with the first one being at 6:00 o'clock. Then Boo Fest is Monday, October 28th. They also have multiple starts with the first one at 5:00 p.m., that's at the community center, and it is designed for children up through 5th grade. These events, Boo Fest is put on by the Berkeley Parks and Rec Department and the Berkeley Junior Women's Club, and I thank both of them for their efforts to bring this fun event to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Henin?
Well, you took what was going to be my longest update ever with some updates from the convention, but I'll cut that out instead.
We will have ample time at our next meeting, I can promise that.
That is what I imagined. So, yeah, for the ZBA, no meeting scheduled for October, and the Tree Board, their next meeting is Monday, October 4th, at the library at 7:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, you're very efficient. Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Planning Commission was discussed a lot tonight, so we won't rehash that, but the next meeting is October 22nd, 7:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. Environmental Advisory Committee met with a presentation from Clinton River Watershed representative on some programming, and also, the EAC is going to do Electronics Recycling Day on October 26th, so more information to follow at the next meeting. Coolidge Task Force did not meet in October, will convene back in November, and similar to Councilmember Henin, we'll do MML conference stuff next time.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Baumgartner?
I will be brief as well, I do want to touch on Touch a Truck as well, not only was it a great event, but it's fantastic when people come together and for a common goal, and you saw that with our Public Safety Department, with our Public Works Department, and our Recreation Department. Each of them had vehicles there, each of them had staff there, all working towards making sure that hundreds of little faces brightened up as they got to see these great vehicles close up, my two included in that. So I thank you and I commend those departments for working so well together, as they always do. Also, it was great traveling around Berkeley this week, I want to thank the instrumental boosters for adding so much music and fun to the community through tag days, and last but not least, want to welcome Ms. Mitchell, she mentioned earlier that she was excited to join our family, we're very excited to have her, absolutely pleasant individual, absolute fantastic professional, and she's already made a big difference in our City Hall just in the short time being here, so we're proud to have her likewise with Ms. Tori Mathis, who is our new Community Engagement Officer, our CEO. She too is, she started only last week, but is really starting off with a bang, is making positive impressions with the CEAC, with our staff, and with our various departments, so two new faces to the family, and we welcome them both.
Thank you. Ms. Mitchell, are you, anything else you'd like to add today?
Hi.
You don't have to, feel, no?
Not this evening.
I didn't want to put you on the spot there. Mr. Staran?
It looks like I have three minutes to filibuster, but I have no further comment this evening.
As long as you want, this thing's hitting.
Because I don't want to cut you, I don't want to cut you out.
No, I actually do not, most of the things that I wanted to mention have already been addressed, with the exception of the Fire Safety Open House, it was a couple of weeks ago, was just another tremendous event that our public safety officers put on for, you know, the community, one of just the great community events every year. Again, they seem to get more, not only more things for the kids to do, but also more volunteers and more assistance, these community events continue to grow, so that was certainly a great event. And as we are in Chamber Month, on October 25th, at Farina's is the State of the City Address that is presented by the Chamber of Commerce, the Berkeley Area Chamber of Commerce, so that is Friday morning at 8:00 a.m. Again, that's at Farina's, and that is the State of the City's address.
With that...
Motion to adjourn.
I will ask for... Councilmember Stedman's ready to get out of here? Councilmember Gavin supports. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Um... The October, oh, sorry.
Turbrack?
Yes, the October 7th, 2019 meeting of the 37th Council has been adjourned.